Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Whitehall City Council Meeting on Tuesday, April 15, 2025. I would like to make a couple announcements before jumping into the agenda. As I shared with the folks here earlier this evening, I know there were some questions asked why we did not have a larger venue. I had to spend pretty large crowd, which we clearly have got. And we did, in fact, look for a larger venue, three or four, I'm going to be exact, but there was nothing available. And so we then came up with this alternate plan that we're utilizing this evening. Secondly, our PA system is not very good up here, so we're going to do our best to speak as loud and clearly as we can. I'd invite the public who comes forward either during the poll public or the public hearing to do the same. And would also ask everybody to respect the speaker's ability to talk without having any side conversations. And again, if you feel you need to have one, I invite you, please go out in the hall and do that. And the other thing, too, at the poll public, as you know, you get three minutes. And usually, I keep track of it up here, but as courtesy to the people come forward so you can keep an eye on your time, I'll actually put this up here so you can see and then adjust your comments accordingly to that amount of time. Additionally, there are two sign-up sheets here this evening. One is for the poll public. The other is for if you've got some questions at the public hearing. So I'd invite you to sign that if you choose to come forward. So with that, I will move forward. And if everybody please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Law, would you please call roll?
Brown.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Heck.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Harcar.
Present.
Dixon.
Present.
President Potter.
Present. At this time, we have the approval of the minutes for the April 1, 2025, Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes. I would take a motion to approve.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Heck for the approval of the minutes. Is there a discussion? Ms. Law, please call roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Minutes have been approved. We would now move on to standing committee reports. Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management met last Tuesday. We have several pieces of legislation on the agenda. We will meet again next Tuesday after 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Harcar.
Yes, thank you, President Potter. Community and Elder Advocacy met last week as well. We do have the two resolutions that will be voted on this evening. We will meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Community Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Community Standards Enforcement also met last week. We have no legislation on the agenda this evening, and we will meet again next week.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. We have three pieces of legislation on the agenda tonight. You may have heard of them. Ordinances nine, 10, and 11. Otherwise, we met last week, and we'll be meeting again in these chambers next week after 6:30.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Brown.
Thank you, President Potter. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we plan to meet again next Tuesday at 6:30.
Very good. Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last week. Our minutes were on file, and we'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Very good. And Parks Recreation, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Official Reports, Mayor Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council and everyone that's here this evening. First, I would like to just thank all of the city of Whitehall, as well as our community partners, as well as every employer that came out for the State of the City last week. It was just a fantastic event. And just a little recap, we started the event at about 5:30. We had 16 employers that were ready to hire came in, did a hiring event before the State of the City. And then, once the State of the City began, we did it in a very different format. We accepted questions from the community. We had a miniature, or not a miniature, it was a town hall situation where we actually took questions from the audience. Those questions were answered. It was moderated by Coda. I would like to thank them publicly for that. And it was just a fantastic event. I highly recommend, if you were not there, that you pull up the live stream or pull up the recording of it. But it was just a fantastic event. And then, secondarily, I do, and I had thought about what I would say as it relates to the ordinances and the resolutions tonight. Ordinances nine, 10, and 11, as well as Resolution 10 and 11. And I, my heart, I just have to speak from my heart, if you give me a moment, because you will hear from the administration as it relates to the public hearing, but at least from the mayor directly. I asked for council support of all of those ordinances and those resolutions, and here's why. Change is not easy. In fact, we had Michael Wilkos out, and he said that one of the things that communities always want, they want things to get better, but they don't want anything to change. And so, that is just a part of it. But as I sit here as your mayor, I think about the history of the city, and I think about the fact that even along Fairway Avenue, when you go as far back as the Adena culture that lived off of Fairway and the Indian mound that still exists in that corridor. And that community experience changed. And then, even, I think about my great-great-grandmother Rachel Mann, who I have a photograph of, photographed from 1916. And in that photograph, she was 90 years old, which would have put her born into slavery. And as I look into her eyes and I think about her eyes in this moment, and I'm trying not to be emotional in the sense that my mother, had she lived, she would have been with us for 77 years yesterday. And I just think about the change that occurred in my great-great-grandmother's eyes, that she could have never contemplated that her great-great-grandson would be the mayor of a city. And that is just a part of the change that just exists. And even the change that exists along a lot of the houses along Fairway with restrictive covenants that are a part of the old deeds that are along those houses along Fairway. A lot of the original buyers along Fairway probably could have never contemplated that someone that looks like me, or maybe other members of council up here, some of you in the audience, would even be able to purchase those properties. But that is a part of the change that exists and a part of the revolution and the growth that exists in our society. And I'm guided by my faith in this moment, and I just have to speak it because that's who I am, and I cannot be stripped from it. But I really believe that faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen. And what I know about Whitehall and the reason why I serve it is because I have faith in this city, and I have faith in the people that are here, and I have faith in the progress, and I have faith in the growth. And I serve it because I love each and every one of you. And I mean this not being facetious, but I've absolutely loved the way that this community has even bound together as it relates to opposition of this development. Because your signs, and I'm certain that in those moments, as you were creating those signs, there was laughter and community, and there was hope, and there was, you know, there was a feeling of camaraderie. And I totally support that. That is a part of our democratic society. And in democracy, we are up here as representatives of our, of the community. And as a result of being representative of the community, you have elected us to be the representative of your ideals and of your ideologies as it relates to this. But what I am thinking of in this moment, especially with respect to Fairway and the reason why Fairway Cliffs, and the reason why I support it is because there is a Masai saying. And the saying in Masai is, "Kasirian injera." And that phrase means, "How are the children?" And the reason why that's important to me in this moment, as I'm reflective, is I'm thinking about the young people that are on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council that stood and had never been exposed to anything as it relates to public service and giving a voice to these young people. But I asked them about Fairway Cliffs, and I asked them about the development. And the thing that I asked them is about had they ever considered about anything about generational wealth, or had they ever considered of how homeownership could change the trajectory of their life? And none of them had that in their minds. None of them had that in their thought process of how building generational wealth could impact their, not only them personally, but impact their children and their children's children. But the people that live along Fairway know about generational wealth. I know about generational wealth. I live in this community as well, and I have a home here, and I'm, you know, fortunate enough that my wife and I have raised our children here. They've gone to the schools here. We have benefited tremendously from Whitehall, and that's why I serve this city with a heart of love. And many of those young people did not know or could not even contemplate having the ability to purchase a home. And these are the young people that we just saw right on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. Well, I say that to say, as a community and as public servants and as those that have been elected, not only do we have to think about today, we have to think about tomorrow. And we have to think about, "How are the children?", not just today, but tomorrow. Because in that same Masai culture, the response and the greeting from that is that the children are well. And in this project, whether it goes into market rate housing, and I support market rate housing just because, one, the numbers pair out for the city, the numbers pair out for building generational wealth, the numbers pair out for assisting our community as it relates to adding an increment to our median household income, which, as you know, in this community, our median household income is about $51,000. We are, right now, at about 17% rate of poverty. And while this development alone won't be the silver bullet to take us into the stratosphere, it's a start. And it's a start in the direction of building market rate housing that can build generational wealth and potentially impact the dreams of the young people. And so, with that, Mr. President, with that, members of the community, that's my statement as it relates to the Fairway Cliffs development. I ask for your favorable consideration, council. I thank you, first of all, publicly, for all of your questions, all of your input, all of your thoughts, all of your ideas. We have taken those serious. Hopefully, we have answered those questions. Hopefully, we've given you all of the information you need to make a decision. And at this point in time, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney and Academist.
In the interest of time, I have nothing to add.
Fair enough. City Auditor and Quinsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, as you know, today is Tax Day. We have been extremely busy in the auditor's office today. In fact, staff was in on Saturday. We've had a lobby full of people from Saturday. Yesterday, staff worked until 8 o'clock last night. And today, they did finally get to close the doors at 6:00. So it's been a very busy time for us, and I'm personally glad to see it over with. But that aside, I would ask for your favorable consideration on ordinances 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, and 33, and Resolution 14.
Thank you, sir. Director of Public Service, Ms. Rollins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will also keep it brief. I do not have an official report this evening. I will ask for favorable consideration for ordinance 033, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Public Safety, Greg is not with us this evening. Brings us to Treasurer Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I do not have an official report this evening. Just want to give a lot of kudos to the tax staff and auditor's office, and happy Tax Day, everybody. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. The following official reports been filed in the council office since the last meeting. We've got one item, and that's the auditor's financial reports for March 2025. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have one item. Notice from the Higher Department of Liquor Control for a new C1 license for ABEZU, area 873 South Hamilton Road, Whitehall, Ohio 43213. This now brings us to our public hearing, which I'll open in just a moment. But I would ask anybody that comes forward, whether it's the applicants or people who've got questions, when you're addressing council, please face council with your comments so we can be sure to take everything in. And again, project your voice loud so the folks to your back will be able to hear you. So with that, I am going to open the public hearing on ordinance 11, 2025, at 7:15. And I would invite the applicants to please come forward to make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, elected officials, and neighbors. Mike Shannon here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. President, you have three pieces of enabling legislation on tonight. I would assume you want me to address them kind of in toto as a package?
Yes, well, this is for the public hearing, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think this project has been pretty well-vetted, but for the sake of the record and the public hearing, you're aware that Mr. Schmidt and JDS Development is interested in developing 11 acres that they own, both on Fairway Boulevard and as well as on my home street, Etna Road. Part of this development involves the granting of parkland to the city commensurate with their goals and objectives to not only expand the park system in Whitehall, but to create a pocket park for the residents in my neighborhood, as well as to create a nature preserve that would be for the enjoyment of all, particularly our students here in Whitehall. It's important to note that, and this has been a very acrimonious situation, and I certainly understand that. I do want to commend the neighbors. The first time we went through this process, there was a marked lack of civility. There was a lot of verbal threats. There was a lot of near-physical altercations, both in the parking lot and other places. And this time, they seemed like they elected certain spokespeople that tried to get the information the best they could. There seemed to be a lot less name-calling and finger-pointing, and someone, people like Zach Woodruff under the bus and former Mayor Maggert. But all in all, I do think it's important to know that, you know, some of the finger-pointings that council, a lot of the finger-pointings that me and my wife, the collateral damage, but a lot of the finger-pointings that this administration, too. And I just wanted to remind the members of council and the newer members of council that this was not my client's idea. This was not Mayor Bivens' idea initially. This was the previous administration's idea. They came to my client and asked him to develop his tract of property in conjunction with another tract so that they could achieve their goals. That was former Mayor Maggert and Zach. She had been mayor for, what, 12 years, and auditor for eight, and Zach had been here 20 years in various capacities. And their goal was to get a single-family product, for-sale product, new construction in Whitehall. It's the same goal I articulated when I took council at large in 2000. Said my number-one objective was to get owner-occupied homes in Whitehall. Even back then, our housing stock was being consumed by rental. And, you know, renters aren't bad people. You regulate the use, not the user. But the fact of the matter, when your housing stock becomes more than 50% rental, you've got a major problem. And we all know what the situation is today. I was woefully unsuccessful in my 16 years on council and as city attorney, getting a for-sale product here. When my client first approached me, he wanted to do a few lots on Etna Road. He met with the city, and they said, "You know, this would require a number of variances, but if you're patient, we're going to be changing the code over the next year or two, and we'll keep these sites in mind." Next thing we knew, there was an announcement that there, obviously, the zoning code had been changed over a three-year period. But there was an announcement that the city made us aware of, that they had qualified for financing, I believe it was OPWC financing, as well as Morpsey financing, that was going to facilitate $8 million in improvements to Fairway Boulevard. Not only the repaving of that entire stretch of road, which is one of the longest roads in Whitehall, but they were going to add significant additional features, including an eight-foot pedestrian path on the east side of the road. At the time, they were going to have two cul-de-sacs, one at Country Club and one at my street, Etna Road. And they also were going to have streetlights similar to what we have on Yearling Road. At that time, the mayor approached my client and said that there was going to be a cul-de-sac here, a three-pronged cul-de-sac. And it made a lot of sense for Mr. Schmidt to develop his property under the new zoning code. The city, the city then took the initiative to contact the adjoining property owner, and that adjoining property owner listened to the city, and he agreed to get his property and contract with my client so they could both go forward and do the development that we called Project A. That was standalone, single-family condominiums in the $500,000 to $600,000 range. We were unable to build consensus with the previous administration. I've previously mentioned some concerns we had about actions of a member of city council who, we feel, despite the advice of the mayor and the city attorney, went outside the scope of his job and actually introduced legislation in a haphazard manner to unilaterally rezone our property back to the estate district. It was pointed out then by the attorney, as well as the mayor, that that could be tortuous interference with our contract, or that could be denying my client the right of due process under the law to rezone his property without his permission in a unilateral effort. And then there were other attempts to get that proposed legislation, the rezoning of my client's property, to the Planning and Zoning Commission at the same time Project A was going there. But those are things that sidetracked us. We knew that if there was a cause of action against the city, we would have to mitigate our damages. And my client was fully vested in the notion of providing a single-family for-sale product. Went back to the drawing board, figured out that under the new code, we could do a maximum of 50 units on the remainder tract. We don't hold any grudges against Ms. Stein for buying the property next door. All is fair in love and war, and in zoning and in development. She had a strong liking for that property. Perhaps she thought it would stop the proposed development. But at the end of the day, we have rights to develop our property consistent with that zoning. We could go forward right now and build a single-family product, or build a twin-single-family product for rent, or do as we propose and do attached single-family houses. It would go in the $350,000, closer to $400,000 range, and that's what's before you this evening. Now, in order to make the single-family development, owner-occupied development viable, the mayor, the previous mayor, who was auditor for eight years, mayor for 12 years, took a pencil to it, along with Zach, who was an economic development professional, and determined it just didn't pencil out. And they had to open up the toolbox to make us eligible for abatements and TIFs. They needed to expand the CRA. They needed a vehicle that if the TIF was implemented, the community authority, to be the mechanism to make those payments. And that's the legislation you have before you this evening. Quite simply put, there's been an awful lot of misinformation about the abatement and the TIF. And I'm not saying it was intentional. It's very complicated. But a narrative got started, and it got legs, that we were getting a 30-year TIF and a 15-year tax abatement. At the end of the day, that's 45 years of assistance for this greedy developer. And I'm not saying that people did it intentionally, but the narrative got out. It was reported in the print media. It was reported on television, on all the news channels. And the average person believes that that's actually the case. The fact of the matter is, is that the abatements that are going into this project will come in the form of TIF payments. What will happen is when we have the chance to sell this single-family product, the payments that those property owners would normally make to the city in taxes get funneled through the community authority. And number one, set aside a little bit of money for the city, not a lot, none is required under the code. It sets aside, under our current proposal, about $75,000 a year for the schools for 15 years. That's about $1.2 million that the schools will receive years 1 through 15. Currently, right now, the schools are receiving $9,140 in taxes for the Schmidt properties, both parcels. $7,800 on one of them and $1,300 on the other. That's $9,000 a year compared to $75,000 a year for 15 years. Now, during that same time period, the developer is reimbursed only for the capital improvements that they put in the project, i.e. the roads, the streets, any lights, the, obviously, the utilities, all of those infrastructures that the city would otherwise have to pay for out of the general fund or out of any funds they have encumbered. And guess what? They don't have any funds encumbered for a new single-family housing development because they haven't had one in 30 years. Okay? So the developer steps to the plate and says, "I'll front-end those expenses. I'll pay those expenses as long as you reimburse me over a period of time that's reasonable." And that period of time is 15 years. We've shared the formula with you and the payouts. But where the misinformation comes out is people take the 30-year term of the assistance and add 15 on it and come up with 45. At year 16, the payments to the developer are zeroed out, and from year 16 through year 30, the school district and the city get the benefit of property that was paying $9,140 a year that 15 years from now is going to be, we project, that they're going to receive year 16 through 30, another $500,000 a year that will go to the city and the school district. Now, that's another $7.5 million that they would be deprived of if this funding mechanism is not approved. So, you know, I could stand up here and pontificate, but quite frankly, I think any of you who saw the presentation at the town hall meeting about the census tract information that Michael shared with the group, anybody who's sawing what's going on in terms of the housing crisis in central Ohio, we have an economic crisis. We do not have adequate market rate housing. We do not have affordable housing. So I hear all the time that Whitehall's got way too much affordable housing. I don't think you can have too much affordable housing, but I would agree that the vast majority of the new development, especially on the horizon, is affordable housing. You've got another 315 units coming in at the Worthman Junkyard. Woda just went online. Despite rumors to the contrary, the project at Broad and Hamilton is going to go forward. There's a lot of infrastructure work that's been going on there for a number of years, but the market, we think, is ready for an announcement in the near term. That has an affordability component. But there has not been a single-family for-sale product such as we're proposing in over 30 years. And that will be a game changer for the city. I mean, right now, central Ohio is growing 104 people a day. The amount of available property in Whitehall is negative, the amount of available units for market rate affordable order buy. You can look at the market yourself and tell that. This would be an infusion into your economy. And people tend to look at just the taxes that are going out and just the benefits that developers are receiving. The employees who do this job, there will be between 130 and 150 employees. Their payroll will be $13 million on a $21 million project. Right now, we've had the most serious conversations with Ryan Holmes. Everybody wants to know what happens if the developer builds five and then doesn't go forward. Well, first of all, the city would be better off by five houses that they don't have right now. But secondly, they'd be able, there's a number of things that were in the development agreement where they could exercise their rights. But that's why we're talking to people like Ryan Holmes. Ryan Holmes is a $21 billion company. And if we go in contract with Ryan Holmes, that would certainly, and the city has the right to say, "No, you can't, we don't want you to use Ryan." But if they approve him as a developer, I don't think anybody would be worried about getting paid. So whether we choose Ryan, or MI Holmes, or Roman Elliott Hughes, or Epcon, the city is going to not be in a precarious situation. I also need to stress that the development agreement was an accommodation to this council. I can see three people on this desk right here who specifically asked me, "Could we make our vote condition on the development agreement? Could you get us a draft of the development agreement so we know..." Could you get us a draft of the development agreement so we know? It didn't matter that I said or at the time the development director said, "Well, that's not the way you do it. First of all, you negotiate, you get the incentives. When the developer has the incentives in hand, then he executes the development agreement." We agreed to enter into those negotiations to get a city Whitehall work product to council so they could see that we would put our money where our mouth is and put it in writing. When you look at the first few pages of that development agreement and the attendant attachments, you can see what the product's going to look like under Project B. Let me just, I'm not going to insult your intelligence and read you an agreement you probably already read, but the things that make Project B different than what Project C would be, number one, Project B would be owner-occupied. Project C, you clear-cut the trees and you build three-story rental twins that would, under the current rental conditions in Whitehall, would be very marketable, but they would be people packers that would greatly exacerbate the number of students at the Whitehall City Schools, the number of students that the Whitehall City Schools would be providing for. And they would take away the $75,000 a year for the first 15 years, 1.2 million, and would take on away the additional $500,000 a year that would happen in years 16 through 30. Increased load on the school, increased students because it's not a for-sale product. The school gave us the number of .46 if it was for a for-sale product at 400,000. They said it would be about .46 students because at that price range, they factor in how many might be going to private schools, they factor in what the owner-occupied child rate is in Whitehall, and that is very formulaic and empirical. And the fact of the matter is, is that on Project B, we are guaranteeing by this agreement that it will include the eight-foot-wide pedestrian pass. We're going to have integrated tree planters. We're going to do the public roads, public utilities. We're going to do streetscape. We're going to dedicate the parkland. We're going to dedicate pedestrian paths to the parkland. We're going to create a parking lot for the nature preserve. We're going to go ahead and put in the required buffering per the code for all of our contiguous property owners. And as we go through this process, when we actually get into the site plan that has to get platted for a preliminary plat and a final plat, we'll make site-specific commitments to our neighbors based on discussions at that time. But again, we were not coming in for a rezoning. We were coming in for the tools to make a single-family development happen, an owner-occupied development happen, and that was at the wisdom not only of this administration but the previous administration. So I could go on ad nauseam probably, but let me just say this and then I'll put a lid on it, answer any questions at this time or defer to the chair as to how you proceed. But, you know, I think most of you know that Jane and I are products of Whitehall. You know, my first house growing up was at 4D20 Virginia Circle East. Then when I was about three, Dad got a raise and Mom got a job and we moved over to 4148 at the street. Then things got a little tough. The income wasn't what it used to be and we ended up at 415 Whitehall Drive. Now, the only benefit that 415 Whitehall Drive had to me is that 439 Whitehall Drive was a girl named Jane Lawson. And, you know, that was, we just celebrated our 49th anniversary. She brags that, obviously, she married the guy next door and as I've said before, she says that's the secret to our marriage. She still makes me live next door. But after Whitehall Drive, we then went to 888 Heritage Drive. We were in the blizzard with a one-bedroom efficiency apartment with a newborn. That was crampy, so we went over to Andrews Court and we were able to rent a twin-single over there. But then, every bit of 40 years ago, we wanted to buy a house. You couldn't get one in Whitehall. So we went to Columbus, went over off of No Bixby. We had a house over there with our three kids. And we had kid number four and kid number five. And then 32 years ago, we moved back to Whitehall to what was our dream house. Now it's a nightmare. Now it's 4,200 square feet on 1.5 acres with nobody but me, Jane, and we both have increased mobility issues. We've got handicap ramps now. And we want to move at the end of our street, not change our neighborhood, and we have no compunction in doing so with the for-sale product. And you might even see me down there on the rental product because my wife wants to continue to serve on the school board and that requires residency. But there's a lot of people similarly situated to us that don't have an option in Whitehall. And there are a lot of people that were like Jane and I starting out that have no options, that you cannot jump from apartment to apartment in Whitehall anymore. There are waiting lists, even the newer developments, Mr. Cass's and Mr. Wyler's, that I had the good fortune to bring before the city, both of which were in CRAs, at least one of which involved a TIF, not to mention the other two, the WODA and the LDG site that I did. So I know that you get paid the big bucks because you make the tough decisions, but as a body politic, you know, I always say that zoning has to be for the public safety, health, and welfare. I think that your vote here this evening, it takes in the same types of considerations because these people are not making up their concerns. They have very legitimate concerns and it becomes very emotional. But I would not intentionally do anything to hurt the city. I would not do anything intentionally to hurt the standard of living of my neighbors. I would not create a criminal problem in my own neighborhood. I do think that those fears are misguided. I don't think that if you have a park, it necessarily means you're going to have a criminal element. And I don't think there should be concerns about those type of people moving into the neighborhood, whether they're rentals, whether they're buying an attached single-family, or whether they're buying a $20 million estate like the Kelly's. The bottom line is an apartment, a condo, and a house is home to someone and everyone deserves the right. This tier, the 395, 400 range, is a totally underserved population. And the last comment I want to make is that during the pendency of this zoning, there has been an awful, I'm not allowed to read 4011 because my blood pressure goes up, but the information that's gotten out there has been appalling, but I understand how it happens. Things get started and they just keep going. But I knew that there were some people rumbling on there about alleged conflicts of interest. I thought it interesting Tuesday night that in a totally separate context, a council member was asked if she had a conflict of interest with her employer and some legislation that she was proffering. Her answer was textbook correct. Number one, I am not a decision-maker at my company. Number two, I don't have any economic benefit, any personal benefit, that I'm receiving as a result of my actions. So no matter what, any seeds of contention that have been planted among you that you potentially have a conflict, that's pretty much a golden rule. It changes, but it's hard to find cases that are right on point. I looked up school cases, but they always involve the principal who's a different type of employee because she's on a contract as opposed to an employee. So if those are the types of questions you have, your city attorney would be the person to talk to or your council if you have one at work. But I just was brainstorming on what else could they throw at me. I've got the kitchen sink lobbed my way and it resonated with a councilperson that had the other two pieces of legislation on. The way she handled that, I believe she mentioned that she went to a seminar, which they used to require for newly-elected people to take the seminar through the municipal organization. So with that, I can answer any questions you have or I can save them for later if you want to proceed with the hearing.
So actually, Mr. Shannon, before we do that, I'd like to ask the city, is there a staff report on this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Please state your name. We know who you are, but if you wouldn't mind.
Good evening. My name is Laura Jones, the Economic Development Specialist.
Lauren, if I could also ask you to project as much as you can so the folks behind you can.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Jones, Economic Development Specialist. Thank you for your continued time in hearing the legislation on Fairway Cliffs. Being handed the proverbial baton in this marathon, I'm here today to reiterate the city's development department remains a champion for this housing project. This presents an opportunity not seen since Langport and we remain excited about this chance and welcome residents of all housing projects, including those living in our built houses, those under construction that are going to be coming here, and our planned housing and those future residents. We have gone through numerous council meetings and would like to let you know that if there's any lingering questions for myself or Emmett, we're here tonight to answer those.
Thank you. So at that point, I'm going to open up to council if they have questions for the city or for the applicant, so please do so now.
Sure. I had some questions. I guess I would start.
If you would just direct who you'd like to have answer that.
Sure. Yeah, these are toward the developer first and then questions later. I'm happy to say those from later.
No, no, please. Yes.
I should introduce my client, Dan Schmidt, is here as well as his CFO.
Sorry, there are two council members talking to each other.
CFO of Brian.
Sir, would you please have a seat?
But this is an open, this is an open council meeting. You are not allowed to talk to each other.
Please, sir, please step, please step back.
It's inappropriate.
Please, please step back. Please step back.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I didn't get to it. That's.
I was introducing, I'm sorry, Dan Schmidt, the principal from JDS and his CFO, Brian Wilmers.
Thank you. So my first question was.
Can you speak up, please?
Right here. So my first question was, well, I mean, you mentioned the difference between, let's say, Option B and Option C in regards to how it would impact schools. I don't necessarily agree that, you know, having a for-rant product would overcrowd the schools that much more than this for-sale product, only because I assume that the rents would be relatively high and therefore, you know, that may or may not dictate who would send their kids to school. I just want to make that clear. But I was curious, you did talk about the economics, I guess, in the tax base that we would see with Option B relative to what we're seeing now. I was just curious if there was any comparison as well from what we would see between Option B and Option C in regards to what we might see economically.
No, no, sir. I can tell you what you won't see, and that's the 1.2 million and the other 7.5 million that the school district would get.
Okay, thank you.
That's the major point. And your rental question, we do have the ability to go 40 feet with a for-sale order rental project. If it becomes rental, you'll see these go to three stories that would support generational living, you know, grandma, her kids, and her kids' kids, which is the dynamic we have in a lot of our rental property now. So based on that, the simple math says that there'll be many more people occupying the units than a husband and wife, a husband and a husband, a wife and a wife, whatever it is, and their kids. So that's where I got that from.
That's fair.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fair. Thank you. So you talked about the payments that would go to the developer, you know, in regards to these tax incentives.
Could you raise your voice?
You talked about the payments to the developer if, you know, if we were to move forward with these tax incentives. So I was curious to hear if we were to, I was reading in some of the agreement, so if we were to issue bonds, how would that change what that would?
That would be, that would be an Emmett question. He's bond counsel.
Yeah, I'll jump in on that. Yeah, there's no intention for the city to issue bonds. So the discussion in there was if they went to a port authority asking them to issue bonds, where, that's when that would happen.
Okay.
Yeah, there'd be no bonds issued by the city.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. I appreciate that.
Mr. Brown, there would be no bonds issued by the city.
Thank you. So I'm curious, in general, I know that there were some provisions in the agreement, some referencing to delays. So I was just curious, I guess, what is the plan? Obviously, delays could be, you know, unavoidable in certain situations, but I guess, is there a plan from the developer to try to mitigate the risks of these delays or the occurrence of these delays? And if so, how do we, I guess, just make sure that we avoid a situation like the Rockwell as an example?
Yeah, we've had, obviously, the size of the project is drastically different, being 11 acres as, and 50 units as opposed to 50 acres and 1,000 units, but I see where you're going. We've had the opportunity to get a chronology, a construction schedule from several different developers and they're remarkably similar in the terms of the proposed timeline, but you do have to be smart and get your subs in line and get your materials. So a lot of that will be negotiated in more detail once we consummate the deal with, fill in the blank with Ryan. But there are certain industry standards that you do exactly to avoid that and it involves, you know, alternating subs and things of that nature in the event that you lose one or you, you know, do another job or whatever. But that's why typically those development agreements, the nitty-gritty details usually happen after the fact because then the developer spends the money to get the additional engineering, the additional analysis done to make sure that the construction can be done in a timely manner. Doesn't make sense to do it now because if we don't get the incentives, then we'll go to a different type of construction for the rental product as opposed to the for-sale product.
Okay, thank you. My last question for now would be, so I know we talked about what would happen years 1 to 15 and then 16 through 30. Would you mind explaining, and I don't know if this is a question for you or for bond counsel, but in a situation in which the developer gets repaid on their public infrastructure improvements, what then happens to the financial incentives at that point?
It's my understanding, and I will defer to Emmett, but at the end of the 15-year period, the developer should be fully reimbursed and they can either take those monies and the city can reinvest them in the TIF area or they can simply close out the TIF and spend them anywhere in the city as long as they have authorization from council.
Is that close?
That's correct. The expectation is that, excuse me, I'm Kelly again, the expectation is that the developer will be paid back in those 15, first 15 years. And then for the remaining 15, the school district will be made whole for its taxes during that period and the school, and the city as well. And the city may have other projects it wants to do at that time related to that area. It can do that or it can, as Mr. Shannon said, terminate the NCA and the TIF.
Thank you.
Are there, was that everything, Mr. Brown?
I'm okay for now.
Okay. Other questions?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Shannon, for, first of all, your testimony regarding your time spent in Whitehall. And secondly, with the whole explanation of what this development and how many years it's been since there has been single-family housing. My question is, as I read through the documents, in one area, it says that per student was X amount of dollars, 3,200, but in another area, it had something different. And I just wanted to be clear that it was.
It's .46, it's 3,200.
Okay.
Is that right? Correct.
Yes. I do know those numbers.
Okay.
I'll check for the typo. I didn't catch it.
Okay. And I have another question. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seymour. Any other council members who've got questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask it through the opponents who would like to speak in opposition of ordinance 11/2025. And again, you saw the sign-in sheet and just, thank you.
Can you confirm it's not limited time?
That is correct.
Thank you.
It hardly seems fair I only get three minutes.
No, no, ma'am. This is, that's full public. This is a public hearing.
Oh, correct.
So you can, you can ask your questions.
Slow down. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd first like to address what you talked about prior to the hearing. You're right, there have been positive changes in Whitehall and in particular on Fairway Boulevard. Currently, the neighbors on both sides. Currently, the neighbors on both sides of Mom and Dad are not white, and the longtime family across the street are not white, and they're the best neighbors Mom and Dad have had, and that's a positive. Now, I'll remember to tell you, my name is Maureen Kelly Havens. I'm representing my parents, Don and Nancy Kelly, who live at 878 Fairway Boulevard and have been residents there since 1965. All of you, Ms. Smith, Ms. Heck, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Potter, Ms. Elmore, Mr. Brown, Mr. Dixon, Ms. Harkar, all of you, unless you ran unopposed, have this job on council by the vote of the Many times, people have filled this room opposed to the high-density development of Fairway Cliffs. Now, Mr. Shannon just gave you a biased, negative description of the behaviors of his opponents, and inaccurate speculations about the values of certain properties, namely, my parents. Hearse. It's all hearsay, and Mr. Shannon should have learned in law school, hearsay is irrelevant. Next. Mr. Shannon is correct. This did begin with the past mayor, Mayor Maggert, and Zach Woodruff, and I suspect they did give, suggest deals to Mr. Schmidt, but those deals were not made in the light of the sunshine, and they were rushed to get finished before the people noticed. But the people noticed, and the people began coming to meetings, and the people began to appeal to you on council, who they put into their job, because you are the closest people to the people. And the people have come time and time again, because this is an important issue. First of all, everyone relied on the city of Whitehall officials. A long process updating the comprehensive plan took place, invited community input, was hashed over, a firm was hired, OMHM Advisors, to guide the city through this process to get a good product that guided zoning. Mr. Kim Littleton came to council on January 23rd, 2024, and, and presented parts of this process in regard to Fairway Boulevard. An expressed goal of the new plan was to maintain the character of Fairway Boulevard. Frontage and setback requirements unique to Fairway Boulevard were put in place to maintain this character. Now, people took part in this. People read the finished product, and they relied on what was in that finished product. And now we're going to ignore it and put something in there that's higher density, that doesn't respect the frontage, that doesn't respect the setback requirements, and that doesn't represent the product of the comprehensive plan. Fairway Boulevard is zoned residential with special conditions for Fairway Boulevard. So understand the frustration of neighboring, neighboring properties. Not only does the development not comply with the comprehensive plan, but now we're, the city of Whitehall is being asked to give incentives. Let's look at the incentives. Ordinances establishing a TIF and a CRA for the development of Fairway Cliffs, residential properties are generally not considered for TIFs unless they're a blighted area. Now, this is probably one of the less blighted areas. They're not usually residential. They're intended, intended to detract businesses that will create a new tax base in the city, and that new tax base is a benefit to all of the residents of the city, not just this little Fairway Cliffs. These tax abatements that Mr. Shannon would tell you are being paid by these people are different than everyone else's situation. When my parents pay their property taxes, they go into the general fund. They aren't just limited to being used on their property. They're used by the entire city where the needs are determined. So to put these, this money into a special fund that can only be used in this community is unfair. It's unfair to all the other residents. Their property taxes are all being used in general funds wherever needed. So the whole idea of offering these incentives for a project that doesn't meet the comprehensive plan, doesn't meet the zoning requirements, is absurd, and this is what the people object to. Now, you represent the people, and I ask you to consider the people who have come to these meetings time and time again, the people who live in the areas of Whitehall that have needs beyond what Fairway Boulevard needs. And I can ask you to consider to follow through with the community's production of a comprehensive plan and to follow the zoning that you put into effect. Now, Devin, you asked the key question. I was watching the meetings online. You asked, why not something more suitable for Fairway Boulevard? Everybody's question. Why not? Mr. Shannon says it's a function of numbers, and what that means is, there's not enough profit to the developer to put something in that's suitable for Fairway Boulevard. It's your job as representative of the people to insist on this. Now, my parents, at the age of 96 and 91, they just had birthdays in April, they know that whatever happens on Fairway Boulevard will not impact them, but they're still concerned. They're concerned for the city of Whitehall, they're concerned for the reputation of the city of Whitehall, they're, they're concerned that business be conducted in an ethical manner and not, and in the sunshine, they're concerned that the officials in Whitehall listen to the people and represent their interests. Thank you.
Any other opponents wish to come up? We've got two.
I'll go first. No, you go.
Ed, ma'am, you've signed, you've signed in.
Yeah, I'm signed in.
Had your name.
My name is Patricia Bolser. I have been working on this campaign, and I have been making the signs, and my kids did have a lot of fun making signs, and I've learned a lot about Whitehall as I've been doing this, because I've been going out and talking to people as I've been putting the signs out, and they've been asking for signs, and talking a lot about this issue, which I got to say, I had to really educate myself on it, because there was very poor information that was given out to be able to explain a lot of complicated things, to explain to the people that were asking me about it. But the, the kind of the baseline of everything right now is that the, the vote tonight is about abatements, about asking for money from taxpayers to allow them to, when the person buys the house, the money, the taxes that they're going to be paying are going to go back to the, to the builder, however it's divided out. Now, we know that the school was going to be covered, that's great, but tonight's vote is about tax dollars, and when I bring it up to people, there's two things. First of all, I want to say, we want development, we want change in Whitehall. I am change in Whitehall. I am from parents who had nothing, who started out of their garage. My mechanic father actually started at those swads, then went, then started his company out of our, our garage on Westfall Avenue, then has, went to Barnett Road, had a company of like 100 people, very successful. Our roots are here in Whitehall. I drove down Fairway. I was that kid that said, well, look those, look, look how, where we grew, and we did grow. We grew from Westfall to Ross Road. My sister and I have lived, my sister still lives on Fairway. We have done what you want Whitehall to do, and I know there's a million of these stories. Everybody here has this story, and that's why Whitehall is the best kept secret. We're a strong community, we're diverse, and we really care about our neighbors. With that said, we really care about Fairway Boulevard. It's a very special street. I was just there today, and I was taking photos, and, no, I didn't see a deer, but the beautiful trees, the lots, the cars that were driving down it. This is a landmark for Whitehall. It really is. We don't have a central downtown, we don't have, we have Whitehall. You talk to anybody and about, you came from Whitehall, they'll say, I love Fairway Boulevard. It is a, it's a park in itself, and I think that we need to embrace that. We have development in Whitehall, we have places to develop, we're still working on a lot of development. That's the other thing that a lot of people bring up to me. We haven't completed the projects that we've started, we have a lot of TIFs out there, we have a lot of money out there already. Why are we using it for such a small project? Our money is sacred, our money, we want the buildings, we want better, we, we love Woodcliff, we want better places there for people to live. You're right, we need good affordable housing that's well-built, that will make it through the years, but this isn't it. This is not the big project. We need to save our tax dollars for bigger projects that have more impact on a larger community, that is appropriate where it's built. This is not appropriate. This is, go down Fairway. I was going down there, and I'm driving down, and I'm trying to imagine this one lot that's crammed full of houses, and you know you're not going to be able to save these trees, they're just not going to be able to. We all know what building looks like, we all know what Rockwell looks like, Woodcliff looks like. They tore down most of the trees there, and that was a large lot. So I have, once again, sent a letter out to you guys, and I would like to read it, but I also would like to take some time to appreciate everybody here. It's, it's, you know, there's this thing that goes in my mind, a little cartoon where a woman and a guy are going to drive, and the guy says, I'll drive, and the wife says, I'll criticize, and I feel like that's how it is. You guys are all driving, and we're here criticizing you, but it's really not. It's been a great experience of being able to talk back and forth and share ideas. So dear council members, as a council member, you are to represent the people. I am urging you, as a council member, to vote against the tax abatements and tax incentive financing for the Fairway Cliffs development for a single for-profit developer. The voice of your constituents should be a critical part of your decision on how to vote. We have provided detailed factual reasons about why the tax abatements are bad for Whitehall, because they transfer the tax burden to every single resident of Whitehall, both property owners and renters alike. If you want fairness, the development should allow city tax money to go to Whitehall immediately, not years later after the developer has been paid back first and at the expense of the residents of Whitehall for years and generations to come. For example, most communities are no longer offering 100% tax abatements, but a sliding scale of tax abatements that are fair to the community that is directly impacted by the loss of tax revenues. If you understand the results of an independent study commissioned by Franklin County Auditor that concluded that CRAs with tax abatements and TIFs ultimately increase taxes and reduce services provided to those communities, then vote against these tax incentives. If you want appropriateness, a proposed development to the surrounding neighborhoods and development that is compliant with Whitehall blueprints and coding zones, then vote no on this tax incentive bundle and force the developer to meet our neighborhood standards. If tax abatements are meant to develop low-to-middle income housing, retail spaces, and jobs, then let's focus development on the neglected parts of Whitehall that have either failed or are vacant. Among other significant concerns are disastrous impacts to the environment along Big Walnut Creek, a park that's not needed or wanted, traffic speeding and congestion increased by city maintenance expenses, and possible, possibility of future taxes and levies. It is for these significant reasons that I urge the council to vote against the tax abatements. Your vote against the proposed tax incentives is the will of the people that voted you in the office and will ensure that developers bring sensible housing that is not a tax burden to the citizens of Whitehall. Thank you.
Thank you. You signed in?
I did.
Had your name?
My name is Carolyn Kaplan.
Thank you.
Sure. So, good evening, and thank you for being here, and thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. Within the past two years, my husband and I have written to various council members in regards to expressing our trepidation about this Fairway Cliffs development. Specifically, we are concerned with its current designation as an emergency measure. Per Section 12 of the Whitehall Codified Ordinance, as I'm sure you know, each emergency ordinance or resolution shall determine that said ordinance or resolution is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, or welfare, and shall contain a statement of the necessity for such emergency. I ask you, how does this development meet that definition? The ordinance continues on to say, no measure making a grant, renewal, or extension of a franchise, real estate transfer, or sale, or other special privilege, or regulating the rate to be charged for its service by any public utility, shall be passed as an emergency measure. Doesn't this statement indicate that this measure cannot be an emergency under the city's charter? To that end, I ask that members please contemplate whether this development is truly an emergency. After all, it has been in discussion for approximately two years, and by our perspective, nothing dire has transpired. In addition, please, as others have said tonight, please contemplate the community voices you have heard throughout this process, and the numbers who have expressed to you, whether in writing or here in person, their agreement versus their disagreement. Removing the emergency clause would help ensure that the development reflects the interests of all of our beloved Whitehall community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name's Brian McCann, I've signed in.
Thank you.
And I got to follow all that, so it's a little intimidating. I'm currently a candidate for city council in the upcoming election for Ward 2. What I'm about to say, you've probably heard. Council, thank you for all that you do and all the effort that you put into, into this. And I hope, here in the future, to be fortunate enough to share in that experience. I don't have any fancy math equations to bring before you. I don't have any colorful statistical graphs to share with you. But what I do have right now is the opportunity to remind each one of you as to why you're sitting in those seats. Whether you were faced with a contested election or an uncontested election, you're here for the citizens of this city. You represent their voice and what they think is best for them and their city. This is not about just your personal beliefs or what you might solely think is best for the rest of us. This issue should be decided with your full understanding of the people in each one of your wards and how they feel on this issue. And from the looks of it tonight, it's pretty easy to determine the pulse of the city right now. When I was younger, I grew up in Gehanna and we used to, my grandmother lived over on Healy Drive, my grandma and grandpa. And after church, my dad, we used to go over to my grandparents' and we used to always go down that Fairway Cliffs road. And it made an impact on my life as a child because I loved driving down that road because of all the great big mansions and how beautiful it was when you drove down that road. And I would just hate to see that be destroyed. I'll leave you with this thought. If you are truly listening to the citizens of this city and you are doing your due diligence as to your role on this council, then this issue should be an easy decision because the citizens of Whitehall for some, for some time now have spoken loud and clear. Thank you.
All right, I'll sign in afterwards. Thank you. Name is Holly Stein. And since I was mentioned by name, I'm going to address that issue right now first. I did buy that property. And let me tell you a little bit about why. It has to do with the fact that this landowner misrepresented to you, the council, to the planning commission, and even to our Franklin County Common Pleas Court that he owned 750. And guess what? I decided to go ahead and take a look at the Franklin County Auditor's website and see who owned it. You could have all done that. That would have been your due diligence to do as well. And when I found out that he didn't own it, I said to myself, well, that's a property that someone who is not going to tear it down, who's not going to raise the land, who's not going to demolish the neighborhood and its integrity, and why can't it be bought by someone in the neighborhood? So guess what I did? I waited. I got a broker. I approached the current owner and I said, look, I'm an interested buyer. This is what happens when you don't own the land. So let me be clear why that happened. It was what was allowed to happen, and I don't like the implications of some kind of devious, backhanded, not legal way that it was done. It was done in the correct way. Now let me tell you too, a little bit about myself, since, since we took so much time to learn about others on this, let's take an opportunity. I don't think any of you know my history. I didn't grow up in, in central Ohio. I didn't even grow up in Ohio. I grew up in Maryland, the eastern shore of Maryland. I grew up in a very rural part of that. My dad was a veterinarian, but he was a farm vet. We had farms all around us. I grew up going to his lab every weekend. My first job was McDonald's, right? Making three dollars and thirty-five cents. I still have that first check. And I know a lot of you who ever did that, you have it as well. But let me tell you also something about myself. I'm a 1990 graduate of West Point. I don't tell a lot of people about that because you have, may have your own opinions about that. But what I understand is duty, honor, country. And that is the motto that any graduate lives by, right? So that is what guides my life. And that's also why, as you know, I'm also running for Ward Four candidate. Now let me get to my talk tonight, and it has to do with this issue about tax incentives. Tax incentives are given to areas where development was previously discouraged in the past and where not otherwise would take place without these incentives. This area is not that kind of area and this landowner is not that person. The developer doesn't need these incentives to go forward. And through his own representation, he has told us that, not once, but multiple times. In fact, he even quoted, "He has millionaires in his pockets." Who here has, would make a statement, "We have millionaires in our pockets?" And then the next sentence, he tells you as city council, that he needs these incentives to go forward. Otherwise, maybe I will do a different type of development. And that's the threat of Option C that they keep referring to. Now let me address a couple of points. Point one, what is on the table is on the table. Your job is not to keep repeating the falsehoods of this bogus scary Option C that's around the corner. What is that Option C? Is it a form of blackmail, coercion, a red herring based on a lie to make you as a city council constantly in fear of something? Think about what you're saying about this negotiation and who you're negotiating with. That party is using fear. You heard it in the comments from the legal representation. Tortious acts, Option C, right? All of those things are meant to scare us and to scare you as a city council. The other thing is, why is this agreement set up this way? The last meeting council, you weren't even given the full agreement to look at. And looking at these tax abatements, let's just take, take the first part, the tax abatement, the 100% property tax abatement. Do you know that municipalities of our size don't continue to give 100% property tax abatements? They have a model, this is it from a neighboring municipality, you can look it up, they use what's kind of called a declining tax abatement structure now. And what that means is, it starts at some number other than a hundred percent and it goes down from there over time. Here's the actual agreement from a municipality that is in the same scale as ours. This was done in 2018. Why? Why didn't you come forward with a different model to help present and incentivize this developer? Instead, you dusted off the same old agreement, in fact, some of the dates were entirely wrong, they were referencing the 2023, and used the exact same language when giving this developer these tax abatements. Why? Right? And here's my question. What, as it comes to these tax abatements, no one has ever said what is the full amount that this tax abatement is giving back to this developer and what is the full amount that's being given back as the TIF? Why can't we know these numbers? This is a math problem. Why are these numbers unknown to you as a council and to us as the public? We have a right to know. Point number two, guess what? No real estate person changes their business model from a sale of a development as a whole to a rental business model overnight. One is, they want a single transaction where they can exit with all of the money that they are going to earn out of the deal. And the other is a long-term, multi-year investment. This developer, this landowner only wants the first one. Point number three, there is no illusion of controlling this developer. I hear this mantra coming from you and talking about it. Why? Because once this developer secures these tax incentives, he plans to sell it to Ryan Holmes. He pretty much told you that tonight. But honestly, he's told you that in other documents. And we have those open documents that were requested by an Ohio Open Records request. Did you read them? Do you know what's in them? You will have no control over this because Ryan Holmes is going to be the partner, right? Do your due diligence on this partner and do your due diligence on the proposed builder, Ryan Holmes. And point number four, this is the one that is the most important point and the one that I think we have not gotten a satisfactory answer in the over two years that we have been coming to your city council meetings and public hearings. What do you see when you look out at these public hearings and these city councils? What do you see in us? Do you see the person who's on a fixed income, who says that they're afraid of losing their house that they have lived in for 30 years if their property taxes continue to go up? Do you see the person who uses the library for the internet and other senior services provided by the city? Do you hear the single parent that is saying that they need the services for their child through Children's Services and afraid that they're no longer going to be there? Do you hear the person who argues against essentially strip mining? And that's the word that you should use. There's no fallacy around that. When they say to you, we're going to save 60 to 70% of the trees, those are those trees in the floodplain. Let's be clear on that. So strip mining is a term. And just to put in a high-density housing to development, that is still against our zoning code. Let's be clear about that. It is still against our zoning code. Or are we merely the peanut gallery, waiting for you to, for us to stop talking so that you can quickly say your time is up and next? Some of you, I've heard, have even said to your constituents, it doesn't matter how many times you, the public, show up and how many times that you come speak, or, and this is a, this is a copy of every single letter that has come from your residents, every single letter here represents you.
May, Holly, Ms. Stein, would you please face the council?
Yeah, sure. This is a copy of every single letter written to you as the council. And being able to say, what do you? What, that this, this fact, it doesn't matter how many times you write a letter. It doesn't matter how many times you come and speak at city council. It doesn't matter how many times you come to a public hearing, that this is quote, "a done deal." We know that you have said that because we've heard it. Guess what? This is not a done deal to us. Let me ask again. What do you see when you look out and you see this people, this mass of people, your constituents, speaking to you, pleading with you to hear us? At what point do you care more about the people you represent than you do about the people that aren't even here? Namely, the developer, right? And two, the potential future residents? We are the residents of Whitehall today. Do you even bother to look up? Do you even bother to look up when we are speaking? Do you, have you ever really listened? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you sign in?
I did, yes.
Perfect. Just state your name if you would.
Okay, yeah, Dr. Amanda Waller. Um, a very wise woman once told me that people best digest information in batches of three, so I now present to you three reasons to vote no on the legislation tonight. Number one, local and regional planning documents discourage new development on Fairway. A comprehensive development plan is a long-term, evidence-based framework to guide future growth and development. Both the Whitehall Development Blueprint and the Morpsy Big Walnut Watershed Balanced Growth Plan identify the land along Fairway Boulevard as a priority area for preservation. Now, ultimately, we know the zoning code, the market, and the laws of the land will determine what private property owners can do with their property, but I don't feel that we should be actively incentivizing anything that directly contradicts with our local planning documents. Number two, the use of tax incentives is not economically justified for this project. Currently, about 40% of Whitehall's total landmass is under a TIF agreement. That's more than double any of the other jurisdictions locally. Before we add to this further, I think we should have some evidence that we're making a sound investment. Currently, Ohio is booming and there's a huge demand for every type of housing. The conditions of 15, 10, five years ago that may have justified incentives to build residential housing are not necessarily in existence today. Other high-growth cities such as Austin, Nashville, Minneapolis have put tighter restrictions on the use of TIFs. In those cities, this particular development, a greenfield development in a non-blighted location that we know still has a 100% chance of being built without the TIF, would not be eligible for tax incentives. Ohio lags behind in this area, however, I'd argue that just because current law allows it is not sufficient justification for an economic decision that has long-term impacts that reach into future generations, not just ours. And even at the Housing Town Hall, Mr. Wilkows spoke for almost two hours about the current housing crisis, but the only time he mentioned subsidies was in regards to low-income and workforce housing, not market rate. Number three, the costs outweigh the benefits. Personally, I would have liked to see a thorough analysis of the estimated economic benefits and costs of the proposed incentives, but to my knowledge, I don't think that was done by the city or at least it wasn't shared with us for this project. On the other hand, myself and other citizens have shared with you tangible evidence on the ultimate impacts of TIFs and tax abatements in Franklin County over the last several decades. And again, the data from here in Franklin County show that residential abatement programs have cost municipalities more than foregone revenue than they've generated in either increased property values or increased economic activity. And the costs of that foregone revenue end up being shifted to the municipality's other taxpayers. And when there's development that would occur even without the tax incentives, the losses become greater. So since there's undeniably an Option C in this case, that means that what we are giving up to get Option B is now dramatically higher. So what are we gaining for, with Option B versus C? Well, in both cases, we still get a new development of market-rate, single-family duplexes that max out the zoning code at 50 units and two to three stories tall or 40 feet, streets that conform entirely to city standards, and a pristine 2.5 acre natural floodplain. So there is a net gain with Option B of owner-occupied versus rental units. So there is an opportunity there for new owners to build generational wealth. But for the community as a whole, it won't make any appreciable difference to our per-capita median income. The potential to collect income taxes from residents or construction jobs is the same for B versus C. And all of the available data, as I said, from Franklin County has shown that residential tax incentives do not translate into increased economic growth or benefits in, to the municipalities offering them. And as a final note with the B versus C comparison, policies that prioritize new higher-income residents moving into the city at the detriment or expense of the current, by definition, lower-income residents is the literal definition of gentrification, which I think we all agree is something we should strive to minimize as Whitehall grows and certainly not something to actively promote or incentivize. So in summary, if we approve the 30 years of tax incentives, by my calculations, we're giving up about half a million dollars in tax income to the city alone. That's not even taking into account the losses to the county and city services. And think about what the city could do with that money. We could offer subsidies to first-time homeowners, buy up vacant lots, plant trees, subsidize new businesses. There's so many possibilities for equitable, sustainable growth that could benefit all of Whitehall. So by voting no on this legislation tonight, you would actually be voting yes to so much more. Yes to a brand-new subdivision of 50 housing units, yes to welcoming 50 new families to the Whitehall Way, and most importantly, yes to ensuring every single person living in Whitehall will reap the benefits from this new development rather than, than just a select few. Thank you.
Thank you.[1706.78]
the Whitehall Way, and most importantly, yes to ensuring every single person living in Whitehall will reap the benefits from this new development rather than just a select few. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Roddy, and my in-laws own the house next to the Schmitz. Matter of fact, Jim and Viv Williams bought the piece of land, four and a half acres, at 826 Fairway Boulevard back in 1974 from the Schmitz and built a beautiful Georgian house. I became part of the family back in 1981. I married his daughter, and she's here, she's sitting out in the hallway. And so, I've been around for 42, going on 43 years, going to that house. We have four kids, we have seven grandkids, and they've all enjoyed that home. One thing I did observe over the years is the Schmidt house, and this is, I'm not trying to evaluate the Schmitz, but it has sat vacant. Matter of fact, the most beautiful Tudor home with, with 10 acres, when I first started coming and visiting my future wife and then my wife's family, they had a barn in the back, they had horses, it was vibrant, it was well-kept. And then, over a period of 30 years plus, it has sat vacant. And one thing I can conclude is the owners of that house really don't care about Whitehall or that property, how incredibly special those homes are. And so unique to have acreage with woods that goes up to a creek inside the 270 Loop. I grew up on the east side, went to Yorktown, I knew Jackie, he was a few years ahead of me, and I knew he played polo and, and, but just to see it degrade, it became obvious that the family no longer really cared about such a, such an investment, such an asset. And I get that sense with this development and the proposal and all of the words that have been said, that it's probably not the best option for the city going forward. There's got to be a better way that stays within the zonings, and I appreciate your time.
Did you sign in?
I have not, so I will first, if that's all right.
Absolutely. Would you state your name?
My name is Mark Sheber. I'm a landscape architect, and I live at 921 Fairway Boulevard with my wife Jane. I want to thank the mayor and the rest of the members of council for the time that you've spent in working on this project. But I would like to request that, there are many of us that have come up and all spoken over the last several years, to ask you to vote no for both the TIF and what's going on in the present proposal for Fairway Boulevard. You need to know from the beginning, I am a landscape architect, I have been for 40 years. I'm registered with the state of Ohio. I make my living working on developments of this very type. Why would I be up here talking against the present development? It's the manner in which it's being done, it's in the relationship to the comprehensive plan that's been developed that we all spent our money on. It's based on trying to fulfill and maintain what we all love in Whitehall. My question is, as I turn around really for the audience, is, is there anyone here?
Sir, sir. I need you to face forward.
That's fine, okay, let me ask.
You okay?
Does it still work? Does it work?
I don't.
There's an on-off maybe?
Yeah, maybe that's, maybe it got switched off. I just told him.
There's no legal requirement, you can turn around.
See if that.
Hello?
No. Doesn't work? If I put it back in here, will it?
No, it's working.
It's working now? Thank you. So, for two years, we've heard.
Again, you need to face counsel.
For two years, we have been up here talking and trying to explain where we all feel on Fairway Boulevard concerning the development and the TIF, the expenditures of our dollars, in all types of ways and different opinions. I want to know, and I can't see behind me right now, so I'll allow you, Mr. Potter, to please be my eyes, is there anyone in this audience, and after two years, I haven't heard one yet, who would like to come up and talk on behalf of this development? Who would love to be seeing this come through as presently proposed and should be up here saying, "We want your vote." What everyone has been up here saying so far is, we would like to hear a vote of no from our council members. The subject matter here is not change. Change is important, and change will happen, and we expect change. We welcome change. It's appropriate change that we would like to see. I have spoken to Mr. Quinzel, last meeting, and again tonight, I have asked him, and he has been under great assault for taxes and taking care of our city, for the numbers and the expenses that we have had and made at the corner of North Hamilton Road and East Broad Street on that development, which started back 2016, maybe 2017. When I was a member of the park board, we were given shortly after woodlift, the cliffs were started to be turned down, we were given responsibility to manage the property at that time before something was determined and how development was going to proceed. I, at the time, made a strong request and with other members of the board, looked at having a tree study done to that property before we would see the same occurrence that we saw at Norton Crossing, where it looked like a hurricane had been present when they started development. And the old trees, which had been committed to be saved, were left denuding the site. We were trying to prevent that same kind of occurrence again at Broad and North Hamilton Road. It was done, we brought OD and RN, they notified us, they made notes. Many of the trees were older and were difficult to save when you start removing everything that was there. But they have made an attempt to save a few, not a lot, but it's the beginning. However, here we are, that was 2017, I believe, it's now 2025, eight years. And I ask once again, and Mr. Quinzel will take a look at this, is how much money have we spent and laid out of our citizens' money in terms of facilitating that development that if we want more housing, could have happened here in the last number of years? If there was a TIF to be given, maybe because that has office complex, that has retail, that has apartments, I believe, and even condos, a TIF might have applied better in the nature that would be beneficial because all citizens of Whitehall might enjoy or use that property in some way or another. The TIFs I've been involved with in 40 years of practice have historically been applied commercially. I don't know that I've been involved in one applied residentially. And the reason they were commercial is they apply to main streets, they apply to the center of downtown of Whitehall, of our Whitehall streets, of Bexley's, of Dublin's, of Westerville's. I've seen them over and over again. They're for the development that serves all the people, for the businesses that are abutting those streets, to encourage it, to encourage the improvement, and to encourage the improvement of the city on behalf of its citizens for their use. The TIF applied for 50 units is strictly beneficial to the 50 units, and it's being handled and carried on the backs of all the rest of the citizens of the city. The developer that we have and has been a respected developer in the city for many years, we may agree or disagree on many things, however, his practice has been commercial. Commercial site development, residential development are two different ballgames. The sensitivities involved in the development of both a challenging site and one done residentially is very different than dealing with a commercial site. So, the difficulties here are in that the finances are probably there with him himself. If he were to move ahead, he doesn't really need our assistance in terms of completing his project. I only ask once again that you please vote no, and I think you're seeing room and day and people over and over again asking you that same question to please vote no for your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponent, or opponents, excuse me, that would like to come forward? Okay, seeing none other, then I'll ask, are there any proponents who would like to come forward and speak?
Mr. Potter, my mom would like to speak, if you'll take her a minute.
That's fine, of course.
Can you fix this microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, as an opponent, I.
Oh, no, yeah, well, that, that, that's, I can go back, that's fine. Yeah, I don't know where, did he?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be fine, yes.
Well, since my daughter said I'm going to talk, I think I'll say a few words. I'm 91, so if I miss any words, it's okay.
Ma'am, ma'am.
It's a good age.
Ma'am, so, two, two things, so I won't have you come up, you can sign on the way out. If you would just state your name, and then when you're.
She did sign it, she did sign it.
Oh, she, okay, thank you.
She'll come up, she said.
No, she didn't, she didn't have to, she didn't.
I'll just do a dance coming up. Are you sure you want me up here?
I think she, I think Sherri said you signed it. Then if you would just face.
I'll just talk briefly.
That's fine, and if you would just face counsel when you speak.
We have to stay this way?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I'll begin with.
Ma'am, 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 face this way. And if you could, one more, I'm sorry, as close as you can put the microphone to your mouth so everybody can hear you in the back.
I've been told that so much, and why don't I do it? Anyway, we've lived out here for 59 years, I think even more, we quit counting after that, and have loved it. And we hope it stays the way it is or gets better, like we were talking about. Excuse me. And we've even talked at different times, we have seven children and about 50 grandchildren, little ones and grand, you know, all running around, and they love it. And I'm sure one of our family will stay in the house, but if they don't, we would like to make our grounds into a park. And we thought that would be wonderful if someone would take care of the home also and keep the grounds and really, but it would have to stay the way it is because that's part of our place too. And wouldn't that be wonderful to have that? And then maybe, you know, whatever happens, that have to go along with it. But I, I don't know, don't, and I won't promise that, but it was to keep Fairway Boulevard a nat, nature place and a wonderful place to raise children. And I had so many friends who couldn't wait for spring, they lived in Whitehall, but they weren't on our street, but they said, "We can't wait to get there and see those beautiful trees and everything." So, I just would say that, keep it that way, but even better, but not a whole bunch of houses that would take away from, you know, it just doesn't fit. But, but thank you for listening, and I love being here today. So, thank you.
Mom turned 91 yesterday.
I think our last opponent, so any proponents? Okay, if there are no further comments, was there anything else by the applicant? No, okay, now, if there are no further comments, I'm going to close the public hearing on ordinance 112025 at 8:46. We're now going to go to poll public, and anybody who wishes to come forward to speak on a topic may do so. Separate sign-in sheet, and you'll have up to three minutes. I'd invite anybody to come forward.
I did sign up, but I didn't pay attention to its sign-up sheet, so let me check that. I have no idea, I will re-sign up, just in case I'm on the wrong.
All right, never hurts. And if you would just state your name.
Yes, I'm Shayna. I'm glad to be here in support of both of the resolutions, both the ones supporting the immigrant community and supporting the trans community. It's really clear from being here tonight that there are a lot of people who care deeply about this community in, in all of the very many ways. And I think that means that people do want a community that's based in care and love and not in fear. And what we can see from, we know that the, that on the national level that things are getting scary, there's a lot of uncertainty for people, especially people with all of the different, the identities that the administration wants to target. Eat, myself, I'm married to actually a British person, which I never thought would be concerning, but we've had the conversations about deportations, even though he was invited as an academic to this country. And I, and, and how much worse, you know, for the kids who are afraid of whether their parents are going to get, come home, for the people who don't have a safe country to go back to, like, I'm grateful that, that we would if, if, God forbid, he was to lose his status for some reason, because people losing their immigration status seems to be the norm these days. And all the more scary, not just, not just for people who come from different countries, but also there's all these, I've heard so much from teachers and my friend groups about the kids who are scared, and, and my dad's retired school psychologist and talked, and was talking to me about this, about all the kids that are scared that their parents won't come home, but also everybody who's scared because there's such an attack on, on people of different genders. And to be able to have a community that's willing to say, "No, we care about this and we want something different, we want a caring community," would be really, really meaningful. It is a brave resolution. At the same time, I was a little bit disappointed to see the wording get watered down a little bit on not using the resources of the city to cause these terrible situations, because we, the, we know that the government can't do the most violent version of what they want to do with the resources that they have right now. Even before this administration, the co-op, collaboration agreements between police and ICE. but we've had the conversations about deportations, even though he was invited as an academic to this country. And I, and how much worse, you know, for the kids who are afraid of whether their parents are gonna get, come home, for the people who don't have a safe country to go back to, like, I'm grateful that, that we would if, if God forbid, he was to lose his status for some reason, because people losing their immigration status seems to be the norm these days. And all the more scary, not just, not just for people who come from different countries, but also there's all these, I've heard so much from teachers and my friend groups about the kids who are scared, and, and my dad's retired school psychologist and talked, and was talking to me about this, about all the kids that are scared that their parents won't come home, but also everybody who's scared because there's such an attack on, on people of different genders. And to be able to have a community that's willing to say, "No, we care about this and we want something different, we want a caring community," would be really, really meaningful. It is a brave resolution. At the same time, I was a little bit disappointed to see the wording get watered down a little bit on not using the resources of the city to cause these terrible situations, because we, we know that the government can't do the most violent version of what they want to do with the resources that they have right now. Even before this administration, the co-op, collaboration agreements between police and ICE tripled the capacity of ICE, because the capacity of ICE is not big enough to do the type of mass exclusion, mass removal that, that the Trump administration's been threatening. And it tripled the capacity of ICE. To be able to say, "This is how we're gonna keep our community safe," by not using the resources of the city, would have been extra powerful, but it's still a really, really important resolution. And it's really important that those values are stated, and I hope that, once those values are stated, it's possible in the future to say, "Okay, we're gonna continue down this path," and make sure that there are actually concrete ways that we are gonna be protecting all members of our community, because all of our rights are threatened when some of our rights are threatened. And I hope you support the resolutions.
Thank you. Oh, yes, please. And I'll just ask, I'm asking if you, if you signed in?
I did, thank you so much.
Fantastic, if you just state your name?
Yes, my name is Joseph Soza, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I use he/him pronouns, and I am a community organizer with Equality Ohio. And I happen to live on the corner of Broad and James, so not quite Whitehall, but like right on the edge. And because of my proximity to the city, I do find myself frequenting the many immigrant-owned businesses and restaurants in the city often. I get my hair done actually at Azul Violeta Salon, which is literally right across the street, every two weeks. I shop for my groceries at Santiago Market, I get takeout at La Libella, there's so many, so much good food in the city, I love it so much. So I was elated to find out about the movement of both resolutions tonight, and I'm here to speak in support of them and to ask counsel to vote yes on, on both of them. As a queer person myself, Resolution eleven twenty-five in particular is very encouraging to me, especially given the political environment we're in with, which is rife with attacks on the LGBTQ community, especially trans rights. With the recent passage of House Bill sixty-eight here in Ohio, and the continued erosion of trans rights in Ohio, it's more important than ever for municipalities to take action and to make a statement as, as I hope you all will do tonight. I think there's a lot of people who tend to undervalue the importance of local governments in kind of the grand scheme of things. In my time with Equality Ohio, I've had the pleasure to witness the direct immediate impact that you can have, right, as a local government, on, you know, regular citizens like us. And, and so I've been able to see this because I've worked with countless municipalities throughout the central Ohio region on local LGBTQ-affirming policy, especially surrounding discrimination. As you may know, Ohio is one of twenty-eight states without comprehensive non-discrimination protections that include LGBTQ people. And what this means is that generally in the state of Ohio, a person can be fired from their job, or denied service in a restaurant, or denied access to a life-saving shelter just for being gay or trans, and that leaves it up to municipalities to fill in that gap. So far, there are thirty-six municipalities in Ohio that have done so. What I wanted to say tonight is, my hope is that Whitehall would consider becoming the twenty-seventh municipality to do so. I would love to be able, maybe to work with you in the future to follow up the resolutions tonight with more LGBTQ-affirming legislation that has a little bit more legs to it. I also want to point out how in the resolution, you make, the resolution makes mention of conversion therapy as a harmful, unscientific practice, which is true. And currently in Ohio, there are also thirteen municipalities that have actually implemented an ordinance full with an enforcement mechanism to back that statement. Okay, I just would love to work with you all, thank you so much, please vote yes tonight.
Thank you. Have you...
I have signed in.
Thank you, if you just state your name.
I am Karen Western. I'm speaking as a retired educator, as well as a member of a church in Whitehall that is very inclusive, very supportive of these measures. I'm speaking in, on behalf of both, in favor of ten twenty-five and eleven twenty-five. I know a lot of what you're probably gonna hear from opponents will be religious-based, that typically is what happens, so I kinda like to fight fire with fire a little bit here. And I'd like to give you some information from some of the major religions in the world, who all seem to agree on a lot of these things. Christianity, because that's where I'm from, from Matthew, they also will answer, "Lord, when did we see you hungry or thirsty, or a stranger, or needing clothes, or sick or in prison, and did not help you?" And he will reply, "Truly, I tell you, whatever you did not do for one of the least of these, you did not do for me." In the Episcopal-Baptismal Covenant, one of the things that we are asked to promise, "Will you seek and serve Christ in all persons, loving your neighbor as yourself? And will you strive for justice and peace among all people, and respect the dignity of every human being?" And that includes all of our human beings in, that are referred to in these two resolutions. In Islam, every, anyone who believes in Allah and the last day should not harm his neighbor, and anyone who believes in Allah and the last day should entertain his guests generously. The Quran says, "Everyone's God-given human dignity must be respected regardless of his or her faith, race, ethnic origin, gender, or social status." In Buddhism, Buddhism emphasizes minimizing harm to oneself and others. Tibetan Buddhism teaches that there are three kinds of giving, the giving of material objects, the giving of security and protection, and the giving of teaching. In Hinduism, this is the sum of duty, do not do to others what hurts yourself. In Judaism, the sadaka is a Hebrew word for charity and justice, helping others is seen as an act of generosity and justice in Judaism. And sadaka is an obligation Jewish people have with God to bring fairness to the world. We are asking you to bring fairness. When we treat others with dignity, Judaism teaches, we are indirectly paying our respects to God. And just to let you know, one more thing I noticed, I looked at the City of Whitehall page, webpage, and one of the things it says is, "The City of Whitehall, Ohio is a dynamic and diverse community dedicated to progress and inclusivity. With a continually evolving socioeconomic and racial demographic base, the city prioritizes initiatives that serve all residents equitably." So I think right there, you have to vote yes for both of these resolutions to make this a true statement. Thank you.
Good evening, you members of council?
Good evening, can I trust you've signed in?
Yes, I have, but I again might have signed on the wrong sheet, but my name is on there. And you're gonna have to help me with that thing, because I don't know if I can see it. Thank you. Absolutely, thank you, I can see that one.
I'm here for you.
I'm asking you, I'm asking counsel to vote, vote positively for both of these resolutions, eleven twenty-five and Resolution ten twenty-five. And I want to, to remind those that were not here last week, as Councilwoman Harkar explained with much debate about, this is a resolution, it is not an ordinance, and we are not making the city a sanctuary city, this is a resolution, and we have many resolutions, we have resolutions against domestic violence, we have resolutions about black history, we have many resolutions, it's just a statement of who we are. And last week, we were talking about concerns about illegal people, and those people become illegal when they cross the border, whether they're seeking asylum from horrible places that they're coming from, and just the fact that they cross the border seeking a better life makes them illegal until they complete the, the process of becoming citizens. And I understand that, but I want to remind us, particularly this week, that two thousand years ago, there was a mother and a father who brought their child from one country, escaping a king who would kill that child had not they crossed illegally into Egypt. And this Sunday, most of the people in this room are gonna celebrate what he did for them, because he was a refuge in Egypt. So we have to use our compassion, as the woman said earlier, we have to see the big picture, what, big picture of what people are doing in their life, they're escaping horrible situations. We're not talking about the people who come here and commit crimes, those people shouldn't be here, I agree with that wholeheartedly, and they should be dealt with accordingly, we're not talking about that. But we're talking about mothers and children and fathers who are seeking a better life. And I think recognizing that we are welcoming and we're not going to discriminate against those people, and we're gonna give them equal access here in Whitehall, I think it's a wonderful thing, and I ask you to vote in the affirmative for those. And on Resolution, Resolution eleven twenty-five, I know I see it, it's going so fast. I just wanted to say, I was, I had conflicts like you, Representative Brown, but when I saw the movie Loving, which came out in twenty seventeen, I realized how antiquated our thinking was, and that, who knows, in another fifty years, our thinking about this may be totally different. So I again ask you to vote in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Hello, I've already signed.
Thank you, if you just state your name.
Yeah, my name is Suad, and I'm very thankful to be here today and to stand in front of you. I am an immigrant, and I am supporting for, I'm an immigrant who came to this country twelve years ago, and I am supporting the resolution for ten twenty-five, which Emmy Harker, Councilwoman Emmy Harker brought it, thank you so much for that. Immigrants being in this country, they have brought a lot of positive impact. Myself, I'm a homeowner, I came twelve years ago, I am a taxpayer, my kids were born here, I am part of those who promote the, the city and the council, I mean, the city and the country. So I just wanna say, like, the immigrants are the business owners, the taxpayers, they are health workers, nurses, doctors, and all those things. So I am here just to request if you can support for that resolution and say yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Yes, I've signed in. Thanks, just state your name.
George Western, probably more than anybody else here, I don't know that I need this thing, but I will talk to it. All right. I stand here to support both of Councilwoman Harkar's resolutions and to ask for your vote for them. I think it is critical, particularly in the current political climate, that we as a city send a message, and it is not costing us, we've had a lot of talk this evening about voting against something and how much money it's going to cost and what we would lose. These resolutions cost you, cost us nothing to be supportive of marginalized people in this country. We stand at a crossroads right now, where it has become acceptable to hate, to fear people who do not look like we do, who do not live like we do, who do not think like we do. I have a multitude of friends who fall into both of the categories that could be damaged by the actions that these resolutions seek to mollify. No one in the LGBTQIA community is here to do anything to you. They wish only to be left alone, to live their lives as we wish to be left to live our lives. They are not attempting to change us. The same can be said for most immigrants. They came here looking for a better life, they came here because they were afraid to stay where they were. They are not here to change us, they are not here to take our jobs, they are here to live. One of the things that disturbs me most right now, and I'm speaking of the national climate, is I am starting to hear more and more that non-citizens do not have rights. Nothing in the Constitution says that the rights in the Constitution are only for U.S. citizens. We stood and we said the Pledge of Liberty this evening, the very last sentence, liberty and justice for all. If the current administration in Washington cannot support justice for all, at least I would hope that my new chosen city, where I moved here last August, we are homeowners, we live on Collingwood, both of our daughters live here, I would hope that my city council and my city would suppose, support justice for all. Thank you very much, please vote yes.
Good evening, did you sign in?
I, no, that's the reason why I waited for everybody to speak.
You're fine, no, no rush.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, my name is Denver Jet, I'm a community organizer, I work for an organization, Denver Jet. Yeah, I'm trying to, it's very hard, but it's okay. So I am an immigrant, you know, just to describe it as simply, and I'm here to say that, you know, at first I didn't want to speak because I was intimidated by the, of course, by the audience, by your, by you guys, but when I heard, you know, the, the people that talked about Whitehall and how they wanted to be the place that they've known for a long time, they wanted to be a better place, and I've seen this, this lady of ninety-one year old, I was very touched, just to see how the people that live in Whitehall, they want, you know, they, they hold dear people's dignity and people's rights, and they want this place to be a nice place, a beautiful place for everyone, and they don't want it to change for economic reason. And that really kinda resonates in me, that we share the same value, especially people in Africa share the same value, we respect old people a lot, old people have big importance in our family. So I really felt like home, and I think a lot of people who came in this, in this country and in Whitehall, we have, have many immigrants here, they feel like home, you can see them in the stores, you can see them everywhere, they just feel like home, and I feel like that really, that's something that, you know, Whitehall residents, they need to pay attention to, these people are here because they're looking for a safer place, they're looking for a place, and then when they see that you guys built this nice place, everything, you know, kinda reminds them of their homes, that's why they, a lot of them contribute in this community, they work hard, they pay taxes, you know. People say, some of them are criminals, they call them criminals, I think criminals are not in the street, the real criminals are in jail, or they're gonna go to jail. The criminals that are in the streets, they soon gonna go to jail, one day or another. So to, to say like, immigrants like illegal, they are illegal, they're criminals, I think, you know, that's, that's really bad, and they're not illegals, a lot of them have paperwork, they have documentation that identify them, we know who they are, like, I helped some of them with their appointment with the lawyers, so they have proper documentation, even if it's a work permit, that's a, that's a sort of identification, you know, you can, they have a social security card, so they're not like technically illegals. And the last thing I want to finish with is, you know, imagine you are starving, you are in danger, and you see your neighbor has, you know, a nice house, they have food, they have everything, and the door is open, what would you do? Would you stay and just look at their house, them eating the nice meal, and you dying? Or, and you being in danger? That's what happened, the, the door will open, you know, the United States voter were not really close for many people, it was, there was some availability to enter, and some people used that opportunity to enter.
Sir, certainly you're running out of time.
Okay, so... Okay, so, so I'm just saying that they're here, they're already here. Let's see how, you know, we can, you know, the system allowed them to be here for some reason. Some of them have documentation. Let's see how to protect their rights. And I really appreciate that Whitehall is putting this resolution. Thank you.
You have signed in, thank you. If you would just state your name.
My name is Stephanie Reynolds. I don't know if you guys remember me from last time. Last time I was here, I didn't say much. I'm also hoping not to say much today. I grew up in a conservative Christian, sorry, evangelical church. We believed in the end times and in traditional family values. I watched Fox News every day. Glenn Beck's program was my favorite with that stupid red phone. I don't know if y'all remember that, where he wanted Obama to call him for the conspiracy theories. I was seven when I accepted Christ as my Savior, and I was seven when I figured out I was gay. I developed symptoms of obsessive-compulsive disorder after 25 years of trying to avoid feeling any emotions because feeling them could lead to feeling gay. It got so bad that at several points throughout my life, I felt like my only options were social isolation or suicide. I know what it does to a person to try and run away from who you are, and I know that whatever makes us do that to ourselves is not from God. It does not bear good fruit. I don't want to live in a place that makes it easy for queer people to run away from themselves. I want to live in a place that makes it easy for queer people to exist without government interference. You have an opportunity to provide that for my community today. In the same way that this country often encourages people from my community to believe that something about us is inherently evil, this country often encourages people from immigrant communities to believe that they are not welcome here. Immigrant communities have been experiencing terror, have been experiencing loss, have been experiencing trauma. The Trump administration brings these issues to people's attention, but the reality is that every other administration, including Biden's and including Obama's, should take responsibility for them. I am disappointed to see that the language involving the use of local resources has been revised. But you still have an opportunity to help shoulder some of that responsibility today. These two resolutions, 10 and 11, are deeply personal to me. I am a member of the queer community, and I want my people to be free. I work with immigrant individuals and families, and I want my people to be free. I am a Christian, and I want my people, every person in the world, to be free. I also want to make it known, after hearing from the people of Whitehall, that I stand with them about the tax abatement and the TIF fund. At first blush, it sounds like the developer is holding the city hostage just because they have the rights to the land. That should tell you all you need to know about their intentions for the community of Whitehall. Please vote no on ordinances 9, 10, and 11, and try to find a more sustainable way to raise up the entire community together. I urge you to vote in favor of Resolutions 10 and 11. I urge you to vote no on ordinance 9, 10, and 11. Thank you.
We live in fascinating times, both nationally and here in Whitehall. Mayor, your proclamation and these two resolutions being brought before us elevate us. It reminds me of a term that Desmond Tutu introduced me to, umbuntu. The good that you do elevates me. And when one of us is humiliated, we're all diminished. That proclamation, these two resolutions elevate us all. There's a corollary, without going into the corollary. Mark Twain said, "History doesn't repeat itself, but it rhymes." In Washington, we see what's being done to our country. Whitehall has set itself apart. In Washington, we are seeing the largest transfer of wealth in this country from the lower and middle classes to the upper class. There's a corollary going on right here in Whitehall. When we're expecting the taxpayers today, and not into perpetuity, but darn close for a lot of us who are 80 and older, of our wealth, and we're being asked to transfer monies today and in future taxation for cities' needs to a wealthy property owner. I'd like you to contemplate the consequences and how we can set ourselves apart and not fall into this, I hate to call it anything else, but a travesty that's going on nationally with the transfer of wealth to the wealthy. We in Whitehall don't have to follow that path, don't have to follow that trend, and don't have to transfer our wealth to a developer whose attorney has said numerous times doesn't need our money. Thank you.
Sir, if you would, if you would state your name again, I know you're up before.
Yes, Stephen Canato.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you would state your name.
Janaye Troutman. I am a social worker, and I work in Whitehall. But I stand before you not just as a social worker and an advocate, but as a friend, an ally, and a human being. I've had the honor of working professionally with refugee, immigrant, LGBTQIA individuals here in our community. I've heard their stories, witnessed their pain, and seen the courage it takes for them to simply live and exist in a society that was not built for them. But this is not just work for me, this is personal. I've held the hands of close friends as they cried after being told their gender identity was something to fix or erase. I've listened to loved ones describe the fear of being deported to a country they haven't seen since they were children, places that hold more danger than safety, more terror than hope. And I've sat with people who told me that embracing who they are means accepting that they may never be able to return to the place they were born. Not because they don't want to, but because to return would be a death sentence. I have watched families break apart and children internalize shame and fear simply because of who they are and where they come from. And through all that pain, one thing has remained clear. These individuals, these families deserve better from us. They deserve safety, they deserve dignity, they deserve to exist freely and fully right here in Whitehall. We all say we want to live in a community where our neighbors are treated with dignity, where our differences are celebrated, and where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. But let's be honest, if you oppose Resolutions 10 and 11, if you stand against protecting the most vulnerable in our city, you are standing against those values. And we see it exactly for what it is, racism, homophobia, transphobia, and xenophobia. No matter how you dress it up, that's the truth. Let me be even clearer. The cruelty we are seeing from this current administration is not about protecting families or preserving tradition or whatever else they claim. It's about fear, it's about control, and it's about hate. It is violence dressed in politics. And if we at the local level do nothing, we are complicit in that violence. This moment is a test, not of policy, but of character, of heart, of humanity. So, I ask you, not as a professional, but as a neighbor, what kind of city do we want to be? Do we want to be the kind of place where people can walk down the street without hiding who they are? Where they can raise children without fear? Where they are not treated like criminals for fleeing war or sinners for being themselves? Because we have the power to say yes to that city. Trying to see how much time I have.
You're about, you actually about out.
Okay, I will end with that, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, did you sign in? Thank you, if you would just state your name.
Good evening, my name is Jim Albers. I lived off Fairway Boulevard in Hef for 25 years. I'm also an attorney. Forty-five years of practice representing developers, neighbors, representing everyone involved in development, as did my father for 50 years. And so, I do have something to say about this proposed development this evening. But first, I want to clarify what I walked up here earlier. I have the utmost respect for every single one of you as city council members. In my practice, in our practice, that's what we do. Even my brother represents all the water districts throughout Ohio. So, we understand and appreciate your service. And I do, and I humbly respect you and appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. And I respect all these people and everything that they've had to say tonight, too. It's been a wonderful thing to see. So, I wanted to explain, when I walked up here, that was during a public open forum. And of course, I have the right as a citizen to understand and to hear everything that's being said by council members. And I know that there was some talk between council members. I don't ascribe anything untoward or any impropriety to any council member. I just wanted to hear it, I knew it wasn't going to make the record. So, I wanted to make a record of the fact that there was some talk that was not being recorded in the meeting. With regard to the development, I don't think you need any more particulars after two years of why and why not this should be done. I would just like to summarize what I've heard. I spoke the first, the first time this was before you, I think, a couple of years ago. I haven't been back since. But I've watched all of the videos, and I've listened to all the citizens. And just to summarize, it seems like this is, if you were to move this forward, it would be very unwise. It's unwise legally. There are all kinds of issues, as you know, with regard to the legalities. It's unwise morally, it's unwise environmentally, it's unwise as a practical matter. It's unwise financially. And by the way, my esteemed colleague, Mr. Shannon, stood here, and you respectfully listened to his numbers because I think you all know of his past services. And I suggest that perhaps some of those numbers might be a bit off. He could give you any numbers he wanted, right? So, I would ask you to look at those numbers again if you're even thinking of moving this thing forward. And that's really, I think, a summary of what everybody's been presenting to you for a few years. And I hope you consider all the constituents, I hope you consider what they've had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Teddy.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry.
My name is Teddy Sharp. I live on Ross Road here in Whitehall. I moved to Whitehall in 1954 with my parents. So, we have been a longtime resident. I grew up in Glencoe Division, and then on to Fairway Boulevard when my father got a better position. So, I know the area, but I'm here to talk about the Resolutions 10 and 11, 2025. My neighbors are from the queer community. I've worked with people in the queer community. I know trans women, I know trans men. I am not part of their community, but they have all been legitimate people, human beings. I would not be afraid of a trans woman coming into the restroom. They go in, they do their business, they come out, they wash their hands, and they leave. There is nothing to fear from a trans woman. There's nothing to fear from a trans man going into a men's restroom. So, that is not a legitimate excuse to vote no. Also, with our immigrant situation, I enjoy all of the restaurants and all of the entrepreneurship of the people that live in my community that have brought such a diversity to our city. And I would hope that you would vote yes on both of these resolutions.
My name is Kevin Albert Howell, and I have rented here in Whitehall. And I appreciate you all showing up and doing your job significantly. Thank you so much, appreciate you, appreciate you, appreciate you. I am a climate refugee. I come from Colorado. In July, we get hail. My garden is destroyed. I can't feed my community without a garden. Having said that, my friends are in dark places. They're stuck at home, they're depressed, they're sick. They are terrified to leave their houses because they are worried about deportation, about racist racial slurs, about all the hate that has been spread since what has recently come to pass. So, I am just totally in support of the, again, words, not the housing stuff, not the housing stuff. But the Harkars, thank you so much, the resolutions, thank you, thank you so much. Because for me, it provides that uhuru Swahili for freedom, that umbuntu I am because we are, that shining beacon on the hill that I learned about in high school, that that is what we are called to be, is to be that lifting spirit for our neighbors. Because when we uplift our neighbors, we also uplift ourselves. Fully transparent, my wife now lives at my house because she does not want me protesting. She does not want me standing up for my neighbors. She would prefer I not use my privilege to put myself in harm's way to protect my friends, my neighbors, my trans mechanic that just fixed my car today. Because that is my job. My job is to use my privilege and say, "You have to go through me to get to them." So, if you have privilege here and you're not a colonized person, my apologies for my ancestors, my apologies, use your privilege. I'm asking you to use your privilege and stand up because that's what I believe we are called to do. Thank you.
Hi.
Have you signed?
I do believe I signed in, it might have been the wrong sheet, my name is on there.
Okay, if you would just state your name.
Yes, it is Jana Ortiz.
Thank you.
So, I wasn't quite, thank you for the yellow one, by the way, because I can't see anything. I wasn't quite smart enough as some of the other folks that have come up and spoke and combined their subjects, so please bear with me. I stand before you today to advocate for the resolution that reflects our city values, to show that we're a community that is committed to inclusivity, safety, and well-being of all of our residents. Whitehall is a community enriched by its diversity. According to the 2020 census, over 40% of our population is black, and nearly 14% identify as Hispanic or Latino. 20% of our residents speak a language other than English at home. Immigrants place a vital role in our local economy. And in 2023, immigrants in Ohio contributed approximately $7.3 billion in taxes and accounted for over $1 billion in business income through more than 38,000 immigrant entrepreneurs. While specific data for Whitehall is limited, these statewide figures underscore the significant economic impact of our immigrant community. Furthermore, immigrants enrich our community culturally and socially, bringing diverse perspectives that enhance the fabric of Whitehall. However, recent federal actions have created uncertainty and fear among immigrant communities. The Trump administration executive orders have intensified ICE's operations, including potential raids in sensitive locations like schools and hospitals. This climate of fear undermines community trust and safety. In his book on tyranny, historian Timothy Snyder warns, "Do not obey in advance." Authoritarianism gains ground not through force, but through the quiet compliance of institutions. While making my final edits to this speech, I was notified that Whitehall's council had chosen to weaken the language within the resolution and simply stating that we would protect our citizens' constitutional rights. and simply stating that we would protect our citizens' constitutional rights. I would encourage this council to reflect deeply on the horrors that Mahmoud and Kilmar are currently experiencing because institutions chose to cower before an administration galvanized by hate and prejudice. I ask you to remember that today it is people with unfamiliar names, but tomorrow it's names like Jana, Tim, Emily. Mr. Snyder, in his book Dark Earth, also says, "It's easier to remove a person from law than to remove law from a person." He was referring to how Germany would remove Jewish people from lawful states to torture and execute them. It was made easier because there were no laws there to protect them. Let's not repeat the lessons that history has already taught us. I urge this council to adopt this resolution to protect immigrant families and uphold human dignity and ensure that our city remains a welcoming place for everyone. Thank you in advance.
Is there anybody else for poll public? If you would state your name.
Yes. Hello, my name is Devin Piscak, and I am speaking to you today on voting positively for Resolutions 10 and 11, 2025. On immigration, opportunity isn't here in Whitehall for all of its residents and should be regardless of their citizen status and immigration origin. I appeal to the personhood of the refugee and immigrant and assert that all people deserve to live without fear and unjust persecution. Immigrants are more likely to speak openly to authority with their life in this country is not on the line. People talk due justice, but the Texas Department of Justice reports that undocumented immigrants are sixty-nine percent less likely to be imprisoned than their native counterparts. Immigrants are here to contribute to our local economy. Forty percent of our Fortune 500 companies are founded by immigrants or their children. Seventy-five percent of our future citizens immigrate legally, many of which choose to call Whitehall home. Empirical evidence demonstrates that immigrants do not take our jobs, but rather they complement our existing fields. Just as we do not hinder essential services to our citizens, we should not refrain from our nation of immigrants. The LGBTQIA community is at a point of emergency. When considering the attacks on the federal and state level, it is important to examine the overwhelmingly positive effects of community acceptance, transition, and safety. A 2022 survey of over ninety thousand transgender U.S. citizens, including eight thousand sixteen- and seventeen-year-olds, has overwhelmingly shown that transition is medically sound with a less than one percent regret rate for gender-affirming care. The average rate for a hip replacement surgery is about eight to twelve percent. A Cornell review of fifty-one studies showed a seventy-three percent reduction in suicidality and a forty percent reduction in attempts by trans youth when beginning gender-affirming care. The recent media blitz is an obnoxious minority. Says the survey, almost eighty-nine percent reported having a supportive family who stand by and for gender-affirming care. It is vital, especially as the federal and state attempt to roll back protections for the LGBTQIA community based entirely on falsehoods, to listen to the people. And the will of the community is to participate fully within Whitehall as equals, to love and marry, to have the freedom to make the medical choices of their own, and to live within Whitehall's bounds. Thank you for your advance, and please vote positively on these two measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for poll public? Seeing, oh, here's one more. Did you sign in?
I did not. I'll do it now.
That'll be great. If you would just state your name.
Yes, of course. Hi, it's me again, Jana Lee. I'm speaking today in support of Resolutions 10 and 11. Both resolutions are a powerful statement to your constituency that all residents of Whitehall are valued members of your community. At this moment, immigrants and queer people are under intense attack from the federal government, as we have heard from everyone else tonight. Immigrants, regardless of documentation, are living in fear of deportation, even from something like a routine traffic stop. Down the road at OSU, students are having their visas revoked with no given reason. People like me are even carrying extra documentation just in case we get caught up in a raid. Similarly, queer people and especially trans people are losing hard-fought civil rights and access to health care. If the Supreme Court strikes down Obergefell, which could happen, even gay marriage could become illegal in our state automatically. Across the country and here in Ohio, many of us are very afraid. If you're looking for something to do about that, this is it. Resolutions 10, 2025, and 11, 2025 present a unique opportunity for Whitehall to build trust with its most marginalized residents. Your vote sends a clear signal that immigrants and queer people cannot be treated as second-class citizens in Whitehall. I urge this council to vote in favor of both. Thank you for your time.
I need to make a quick announcement. I'm also a member of the League of Women Voters, and I promised that I would make this announcement. I'm Teddy Sharp. I just spoke before. There is a Civic Cocktails Hour at Flavor 91 Bistro on Monday, April 28th. It's between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. So if you want, League of Women Voters is bipartisan, and we have Republican, Democrat, and Independent voters, all belonging to the League of Women Voters.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for poll public? Seeing none, I am going to call for a ten-minute nature recess. So we will reconvene at 9:47.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
I need something to do.
About one minute. If everybody will start to take their seat, about one minute. Okay, we are reconvening the meeting at 9:47. And we will now go on to verification of copies. Ms. Odd, would you please call Roll as to whether each member of the council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. Under third reading, we have ordinance 9, 2025. Organizing the Fairway Cliffs Community Authority, establishing the boundaries of the authority, establishing the method for selecting the Board of Trustees of the Authority, appointing members of the Board of Trustees of the Authority, and fixing the certi-bond amount for the members of the Board of Trustees and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to untable ordinance 9, 2025.
I'll second. There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, seconded by Mr. Brown, to untable ordinance 9, 2025. Is there any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call Roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Ordinance has been untabled.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to amend ordinance 9, 2025 by striking, declaring an emergency.
Second. There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, seconded by Mr. Morrison, to strike the emergency clause. Is there any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call Roll.
I would just like to say something.
Oh, yes, please.
You know, I've obviously heard this conversation before, and although I do think it's a relevant concern from residents, I will say that when we're talking about, you know, what constitutes an emergency, I think in this case specifically, at least for me, you know, when I go to the Morsey State of the Region address and they say that the number-one issue facing the region has been housing and affordability, that to me constitutes as an emergency in and of itself, being able to afford housing. So whether or not people agree or disagree on that, I do think that that's at least, it should be on people's minds. And, you know, I'm not arguing. I don't think that people should not have the concern that they have as far as what the emergency measure means for this piece of legislation. But I do just want to put as far as what the emergency measure means for this piece of legislation, but I do just want to put that out there for the public. So that would be.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Brown?
No.
Elmore? No. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Abstain.
Smith?
No.
Harkar?
No.
Dixon?
Yes.
The emergency measure has not been removed, it remains.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce and move for the adoption of ordinance nine twenty-two-five.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, seconded by Mr. Brown, for the adoption of ordinance nine twenty-two-five. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I do want to point out, these are fairly overall comments to all the legislation, it's kind of hard to separate it out. Can you hear me in the back? Should I pick it up? No. The cord's not that long. Um, there was talk of numbers, so I just wanted to reiterate what's been presented several times. Um, there is a little bit motion, probably in either way, but not large movement. So, um, what is proposed is the NCA will collect around, I'm just gonna round up a little bit, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars a year. Seventy-three-thousand-six-hundred would be paid to the schools. Currently, on these two properties, the schools are receiving nine-thousand dollars. Eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred dollars will be paid to the city. Um, currently, the city is earning one-thousand-seventy-seven dollars. Um, and the payment to the developer to reimburse for infrastructure only is one-thousand-eight-hundred, one-thousand-eight-hundred-seven and four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. Numbers are difficult this late. Um, and current, there is no current number for that. Um, so we are seeing a large amount still go back to our city to pay for the services the community and this neighborhood would need, and the schools are being reimbursed. Um, as pointed out by Mr. Shannon, three-thousand-two-hundred per pupil, um, on an average of point-four-six students per household. Gotta find my notes. Um, I wanted to point out a couple of things. We were challenged on a couple of items, and so I would like to challenge the community back a bit. Um, we were asked if we see the people in need, and we do. I saw them when I was on Planning Commission, and I saw them now on Council. And I would challenge you back, where were you when we literally heard people say, "We don't want those people in our community about the enclave at Maplewood in Maine and the LGG, LDG development, which is affordable housing." Um, you talk about Rockwell, how you are in support of that, but that project did not stand only on positivity. There were people that lived there that were angry. There were other people that said, "We were taking away." And so, but you choose to speak of it as a great project because you support it, but there was negativity there as well. Um, and so I reject the proposal that we don't care. And so I challenge you back, where were you when people literally said, "We don't want those people here." Um, and I also want to point out that many of us, maybe not all of us, live and our lives are supported by government interference in housing. Thirty-year mortgages, fifteen-year mortgages did not exist until the federal government stepped in. Whitehall was developed by developers. Most, maybe not all of us, live in homes developed by somebody, possibly incentivized by the federal, state, or maybe even local government. Um, before the nineteen-sixties, building entire neighborhoods did not exist, and that's how much of Whitehall was built. Um, I understand that incentives are contentious, and I look forward to the day where we feel we can operate without them. And I understand that it can seem like, between the several projects happening right now, that there's so many projects happening, but what we're asking is, regardless of how much we love Whitehall, there is still somewhat, unfortunately, a stigma attached to building here, developing here, and investing in this community. And we've asked people like Casto, who built Norton Crossing, to take a risk in building our community, and it's paid off. We've supported affordable housing with incentives, and I hope to see that pay off. As we've said many times, that we haven't seen single-family developed in here in a long time. We are asking somebody to take a risk. The idea is, at least in my mind, that yes, we see and we move to potentially a sliding scale, but regardless of how much I love Whitehall, we are still asking developers to take risks in building here. Um, we are asking them to help us prove concept that developing here means something, that you can, um, build a good project here, and it will be, um, well-utilized and popular. Um, we've been told how beautiful this area is, yet when the Morsey project was proposed, the community was against it. It's beautiful, but we don't want to share it with anybody else, and that's a direct conflict. I was at the Morsey meeting when residents said, "If we put in multi-use pass, criminals are gonna use it to case out our homes." So it's either beautiful and everyone should get to enjoy it, or only the people who own and live there get to enjoy it. Everybody else just gets to drive by. Um, trying to check my notes.
Please, do the clap.
And I also find it very interesting that there are many people who have admitted, and not admitted, shared, that they're also developers, and they've said that I only develop good projects. If I had the time, which I don't, I could find people that don't like your projects. I could find people that are dissatisfied with them, or said it changed their community. There is no, you know, you're not doing something more exceptional. Um, and so it's interesting that a developer would challenge another developer. Um, and somebody pointed out that residential TIFs are not generally, not generally, not usually considered. Well, in our community, I would say, this is that unusual circumstance. We don't have massive amounts of farmland. We don't, to my greatest dismay, always have developers banging down our door to build. People say that, you know, the housing crisis is there, developers want to build. Well, somebody, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I'm not understanding that there's a pipeline of developers who are ready to build project after project after project. We work with those who are willing to build in our community, and we do, I do, I can't speak for everybody. I do my best to impact them so that they veer as positively as possible. Um, and... What's the best way to say this? Um, shh, these things, as much as people want them to be straightforward, or are not, um, there's many angles to consider. And so I could probably talk much longer, but I wanted to point out and challenge back some of the main things I've heard and show where I'm coming from a little bit. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to piggyback off of that. First of all, I just want to thank you for sharing those comments. And to me, it's crazy that throughout this entire process, you have been helping lead the conversation, asking the hard questions, and then when you go to share a different side of an argument, there's people grumbling, don't want to listen to you. You guys just came over here, and we listened to you, we offered you respect, and then you come, and then when she wants to talk and make points, you grumble and moan and make all these whatever. It's absurd. This is supposed to be a conversation that we've had with the community. You're supposed to, at least in my opinion, when you're up here, you're supposed to be as objective as possible. You should make arguments for and against. You should not just pick one side of an argument and run with whatever data fits that narrative so that you can go with that. So again, I just wanted to thank you for doing that. Um, I just wanted to ask really quickly if we could confirm, because we did hear different things tonight, and so I don't know who this could be confirmed by, but I just wanted to know, number one, does this project, as it's being proposed, does this fit zoning, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Um, with the, okay, that wasn't, okay, so with that. So with that, um, the other question that I had, it came up that the taxes that would be collected by the NCA would only be for this area. Again, I asked simply, yes or no? Would the taxes that are being collected only be able to be used in this district?
For the first fifteen years, yes. Years sixteen through thirty, not necessarily. The city could use them elsewhere in the city.
Thank you. Um, and so in that regard, I guess, so if in the first fifteen years that these dollars are being spent within this district, how does money go into the school and the city first?
The community authority would receive the payment from the people who buy our single-family homes. Then they would divvy it up per the formula you've already seen, give it to the city, the schools, and then the developer on the ratios you've seen in the payments.
Okay, so just to be clear, are you saying that everything above that is what would have to be spent in that district? Or how does that work? I'm confused.
Well, um, everything that the community authority pays in, is paid into the community authority on a yearly basis by those residents, gets distributed on a yearly basis to the city, the school district, and the developer for fifteen years, or until the developer's paid back totally for the cost of infrastructure, public improvements, utilities. And once that happens, and it's calculated, so it happens near fifteen, years sixteen, the city can apportion those taxes that come in years sixteen to thirty to the TIF district, or if they cap the TIF district, they could spend them as they wish and just need the appropriate appropriations legislation to give them in the general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, it asks per your small council.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just a little clarification. So the NCA charges will be collected, just like your property taxes, and so those will be on your bill. If you're a resident there, you'll receive them from the county, from the county, and then you pay them, just like property taxes, and they'll be distributed to the NCA, and we'll have them distributed to the city and to the school district per the agreement. And then after that, they'll use to pay the developer, reimburse them for those expenses on the public infrastructure improvements that are approved by the city and the NCA. Um, and then after that, after years fifteen, um, those dollars won't be collected anymore by the NCA. It'll be through your property taxes, through the service agreement, or through the tax permit financing, and those dollars will be collected in the same way, and then distributed in the same way. Go to the schools, and it'll go to the city for public infrastructure improvements benefiting the TIF area. And then if, after that point, if you've got nothing else to spend it on benefiting that TIF area, your TIF will be concluded.
Okay, so just to be a hundred percent clear, because I just want to make sure that I understand. So when you say that the money is going to the schools and the city in those first fifteen years, that means, okay, so right now, the nine-thousand dollars that are being, or fifteen-thousand dollars that are being generated, the nine that go to the schools, the one that's going to the city, those get distributed going?
They get distributed like to all the taxing entities that receive those dollars, yes. And then after that, it's the same way, it's just the portion for the charge is distributed to the school district and to the city, and then to the developer.
Right, okay.
And it's only given to the developer once the developer provides evidence of those costs, which I'm sure they'll have, and the city approves them, and that's how it'll work.
Cool, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say on another point, so I think, number one, it's been very helpful to hear from the public just in general. Obviously, there are people who, you know, don't want development to happen, period, which I can appreciate, I understand that. Um, ultimately, that's not what we're voting on. What we have heard from the beginning, I wasn't involved in the first conversation, unfortunately, but, um, you know, it was my understanding that there was, let's say, an option A, that was gonna be this thing. And when the conversation was being had between the, the community and the council at the time, the understanding that I have is that if they weren't able to do option A, they said, "Hey, we'll do option B." And I'm assuming, I don't know that to be true, but I'm assuming at that time, people had the same, you know, sentiments as far as, "Well, we don't want option A or B, and, you know, if he's not gonna do it, it's not gonna happen," what have you, that's fine. But now we're at the option B that was understood by me to be the second option. Now we're hearing, "Hey, it's option B, or it's option C." And now people are saying, "Well, we don't want either one of them," and whatever the case may be. But again, when we're making this decision, we have to look at what's in front of us and what we're hearing. And so it's either, from the way I see it, option B, which would offer the things that have been said, or it'd be option C, which would offer the things that have been said. So ultimately, that's what we're making the decision based off. Um, I just want to say that in any case, it has been helpful to hear from the community, to be able to have certain conversations. And what I would say is, generally, you have to connect before you correct someone, taught me that. So I just want to say thank you, first of all, for giving your input, for putting together town hall meetings and having community input, being able to get together, make signs, whatever the case may be. You all doing that is beneficial for the community, one way or the other. And ultimately, you know, this is maybe one of the first times that we've seen it happen in this way, but as we continue, you know, my hope is that it would be, you know, more inclusive and more smooth for everybody involved. But ultimately, what I would like to say, I also push back on some of the narratives as far as council not caring or not hearing the residents. I think it's disingenuous, I get it, it's, you know, election time, whatever, so, you know, people have to put out different things, whatever the case may be, but there are those same people who have told me that, "Thank you for helping ask the best questions. Thank you for leading the conversation." But because I'm up here either being objective, or whatever the case may be, it's popular then to come up here and paint a picture as though we don't listen to people, or we don't represent the people. Um, ultimately, what I would say is, although, yes, we do represent you, and we have to make sure that your voices, your concerns are addressed, are forefront in this decision-making process, we also have to do what we believe is best. Uh, we have to follow our conscience, we have to listen to the experience, the backgrounds that we have, and ultimately, we have to make decisions that we think are best for the community. So I just wanted to leave with all that. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Horace? Yes, sir. I as well like, uh, this councilperson Brown and councilperson Smith want to speak in hold to the three ordinances, nine twenty-five, ten twenty-five, eleven twenty-five. And my comments are primarily due to a lot of the concerns that I've heard out here, which is TIFs. I normally don't do this, but I've written down a statement that I wish to make pertaining to this for the city. Here's information that I've received from administration, double-sided, okay? I also requested information from council clerk. Uh, that is all of the then-announced from twenty-fifteen to present. I requested public records from City of Whitehall Schools on February eleventh of this year. I received a response on February eleventh, which raised some serious questions. The report showed various payments over a six-year period from twelve-ten, twenty-fifteen, through seven-nineteen, twenty-twenty-one, and did nothing after. On February thirteenth of this year, I requested records from City of Whitehall Economic Developer, Economic Development, Mr. Long. The request was all TIF, CRAs, revenue sharing, reports showing payments to Whitehall City Schools by, by the City of Whitehall from twenty-fifteen to present. Today is April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. I have not received any type of response from Mr. Long to this date. On February twenty-eighth of this year, I requested information from Mayor Bivens and received a few hundred pages of documents of information which were not useful in finding the answers I was looking for. On March twenty-seventh of this year, I made a second request to the mayor for reports on the economic impact on the agreements from January one, twenty-twenty, or twenty-fifteen through the present date. On March twenty-seventh, about an hour later, I received a response. There are no reports on the economic impact on the agreements. There are no reports on the economic impact on the agreements from one, twenty fifteen, through present date. I guess my question there would be, why are there no studies on that? I also made a request to City Council Clerk Julia Oggs to find all then and nows from the auditor's office from twenty fifteen to the present, and still could not find the answers I have been seeking. Uh, that to me is very concerning, that with all these documents, I can't find anything on information for TIFs being paid to the schools. And as well, I had requested, I believe back in January from Mr. Long, a flood plain report on this property and the development, the results, how it would affect that property, still no response. Why is it that the schools can give a record response in just hours, and the city has no proper response in months? I don't believe we can pass Fairway Cliffs or any other TIFs without answers. And this is for the children. That's all I have on that side of the chart.
Thank you. Does anybody else?
Well, first of all, I would like to uh, thank Counselor Morrison for his uh, determination to find out some answers, which unfortunately, he seems to not have received. I have a little something I'd like to say. There has been much said and presented regarding the Fairway Cliffs project, both in its previous and current iterations. As a result then, this body has been witness to the great upset in the community which these various proposals have brought, both in Ward Four and throughout our city. That tumult, we must now know as justified after having seen the merit of various actions by the people and hearing the logic and reason and sense of their arguments made to us and in the public sphere. While the administration and the developer surrogates have made their arguments for the legislation, none have provided the heft with which to outweigh the arguments against it. And while I've heard some on this body defend and play devil's advocate for the legislation, I've heard little in support and defense of the citizens vigorously astute point of view which they've so patiently and passionately provided us. Couple these things with the outpouring of grassroots effort and enormous homework the community have so clearly and brilliantly offered for this council, born out of their ardor for the beloved Fairway Boulevard, in what has to be the greatest and most admirable community-wide outcry against legislation I've ever seen in Whitehall native. And I know, as a representative of the people with whom then, my decision here tonight must lie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to comment.
Yes.
Uh, my my comment is is um, with regards to uh, the TIFs. Um, and um, I would, I would just address the fact that Counsel Morrison has sat on council for numerous years, this is not the first time, and TIFs were certainly given, and I'm sure they were voted on in the affirmative. And I say that because there is nothing new. We know about TIFs, we voted on TIFs, and TIFs aren't new to this council or to this city, or to this administration, or the previous administration. So, I just wanted to make note that now all the, um, I wouldn't say all of a sudden, but there is a grave focus on this particular administrations um, in everything that happens within this administration. And so, that concerns me because we are in the business of making sure the safety, welfare of this city. Yes, we respond to the people, yes, we care about the people, yes, we see the people. Yes, we have to look at what's in the best interest of this city. And sometimes, what's in the best interest of the city may not be what's in the best interest of a person or several people. And I'm gonna piggy back on something that Counselor Smith said with regards to Maplewood. Maplewood had some of the same issues, but I didn't see any of the people sitting out in this um, chambers at the Maplewood when Maplewood, the enclave, was being built, or it was being discussed.
Look, Galore.
It's a matter of respect. You guys had respect when you came up and spoke. Again, as Counselor Brown said, respect goes both ways. You may not like what I say, but it is my turn to speak. At the end of the day, we have to do what's in the best interest of this city to progress it, to move it forward, and to make it so that there is market housing in this community. And that's it.
I just wanna uh, say a few other words. Um, I'm, I'm just so tired of hearing the different rhetoric about, again, how one person up here is for the people because he's willing to vote however you say, without doing any, I'm not gonna, without voting his, he's sat up here, and I I really hate doing this because I told you, I think it's important that we are, have a united front up here on council, but time and time again, people are willing to make us look like we're separated, and like we're, there's one person up here that's for the people and other people who are not. Last week, I asked a very specific question given to me by a resident. The, in my opinion, probably the best argument for why we would vote no on something like this in regards to how option C would provide theoretically more tax dollars to our community, and it would still give us a a product that we, you know, we would benefit from ultimately. But again, for for people to make it seem as though we, we're not asking the questions of the residents, we're not listening to the residents, and someone else is up here making a grand stand for the people, again, that's the type of rhetoric that splits our community, that splits our council, and we can't have that if we're gonna continue to have these conversations in good faith and move forward together, period. So ultimately, what I would also like to say is, in general, it's my understanding from speaking to developers from all over this city, that since, I'm not, and I'm not saying this to say that we have to do it because everybody else is doing it, whatever. But I am saying that when developers try to make these deals work, period, since twenty twenty, since interest rates have gone up, since the cost of building has gone up, it has been near impossible to make something work without public par- private partnerships, without financial incentives, period. That's just how it works. There are, you would be very hard pressed to find, I've heard there are two developers in town that can make deals like this work in this capacity without any financial incentives. So ultimately, these financial incentives are a tool that we can use to help incentivize the type of development that we want to see, period. We have not seen a for-sale housing community in Whitehall for almost thirty years. There, for people that keep saying, well, we'll just say no to this and get somebody else to do it, that's not how it works, obviously, or else we would have seen it by now. So, all I'm saying is that that is a very relevant part of the conversation that needs to be had, and that's it. And I I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Any other discussion up to the council?
I didn't prepare any statement on this, but I just want to say like,
I didn't either.
Counselors, well, you did great then for not having anything prepared. Counselor Smith, Counselor Brown, I I mean, I do really appreciate the fact that, I mean, all of, all of us have, I I hope tried, but I do feel like you two, more than any, have asked some of the really difficult questions because this is an area that you know a great deal about, not an area that I have a lot of expertise in. Certainly, this last year coming into council has been educational, I'll say. But whoever said that this was a done deal, I'm sorry, that's not true. Because I did not have a strong opinion on this coming in. I am open-minded to hearing this, I I have listened to every one of you speak. If I looked down, I took notes. I went back, I've watched the council meetings again if I wanted to, I noted if I wanted to go back and listen to something you said, or if there was more questions. You can believe me, don't believe me, but I'm telling you, we've spent hours, it's ten twenty at night. If this were an easy decision, this would have been done hours ago. So I just want to, you know, back up what everybody has said here, this, we have spent a great deal of time on this. If this were an easy decision, I imagine this would have been done months ago, and it would have been over with. But this is not a done deal months in advance because, I I mean, I sure didn't have my mind made up about this because I do want to hear what everybody has to say. And I have spent a lot of time reading through all this paperwork and asking additional questions. So, that's all I'll say.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Oggs, would you please call roll?
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Heck?
Abstain.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
No.
Ordinance nine, twenty twenty-five has passed with four votes. Therefore, the emergency clause will be coming off because it needed to have five votes to keep the emergency clause in place. Next is ordinance ten, twenty twenty-five. Approving community reinvestment area real property tax exemption application for Fairway Cliffs LLC. Orders designated, authorizing the mayor to execute an infrastructure agreement and related documents for the project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to move to untable ordinance ten, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Brown to untable ordinance ten, twenty twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Ordinance ten, twenty twenty-five has been untabled.
Mr. President, I would like to make motion to amend ordinance ten, twenty twenty-five by striking declaring an emergency.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Morrison to strike the emergency language from ordinance ten, twenty, ten, twenty twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Brown?
No.
Elmore?
No.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Abstain.
Smith?
No.
Harkar?
No.
Dixon?
Yes.
The emergency language will remain.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce and move for the adoption of ordinance ten, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Brown to, for the uh, ordinance ten, twenty twenty-five introduction and approval. Is there any discussion?
I'll just, let me, let me uh, ask a quick question, and I don't know if it could be answered tonight. Um, but, you know, ultimately, the the goal would be, I guess, that we're thinking about this as we move forward. I know that Mr. Morrison, you know, brought up his point about uh, not having information on, you know, TIF information now. So my question would just be to, you know, economic development, um, do we have plans of how we would track um, these types of incentives moving forward, uh, to make sure that we are being well-informed as we're continuing to make these decisions, as a?
Actually, Mr. Brown, just a point of order, I'd say that that is a separate conversation.
Sure.
So this is strictly on ordinance ten.
Sure.
This is great conversation, but that's my phone. Any other discussion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Where are we at then on this?
We're moving for the adoption.
Of ten, twenty twenty-five.
Correct. Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Heck?
Abstain.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
No.
Ordinance ten, twenty twenty-five has been adopted, but will also not have the emergency clause. Next, we have ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five. Creating the Fairway Boulevard Tax Income Financing Incentive District, declaring improvements to the parcels within the incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establish the municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the purpose of those service payments, and specify the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, uh, I would like to make a motion to untable ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five has been untabled.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to amend ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five as submitted.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Morrison to amend ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five as submitted. Is there any discussion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Just to be clear, can we, can we uh, say what the amend name was?
It was, you should have it here. It was outlined, and she said it in color the other day. I don't, I don't have the color copy here, so I can't.
I just was just.
There's several changes.
If we had read it up.
Yeah, no, she she said it last week.
Okay. Um, yes, okay.
Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Abstain.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Okay, uh, ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five has been amended as notated.
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to uh, amend uh, ordinance eleven, twenty five uh, to strike out declaring an emergency.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Morrison to amend ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five to move the emergency clause. Is there any discussion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Brown?
No.
Elmore?
No.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Abstain.
Smith?
No.
Harkar?
No.
Dixon?
Yes.
The emergency clause will remain.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce and move for the adoption of ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Brown for the approval orders eleven, twenty twenty-five. Is there any discussion?
Uh, I'll just throw that question back out there if I'm able. For this, would it fit in this conversation then, or just as far as?
No, this is still, that's a separate issue, but you can certainly ask.
Okay.
Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Heck?
Abstain.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
No.
Ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five has been adopted, with the exception of having the emergency clause, which will be removed.
Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Next up is Resolution ten, twenty twenty-five. A resolution supporting immigrant rights and protections and declaring Whitehall a welcoming city and declaring an emergency.
Um, I just want to state before this one goes in, as far as the um, declaring an emergency, because these two pieces, uh, ten, twenty twenty-five and eleven, twenty twenty-five are resolutions. Um, the declaration of an emergency really wouldn't have the right to go to like a referendum because it's a resolution. That would be more uh, when it's an ordinance, just to clarify that point. So um, I would like to um, amend as submitted, to introduce it to be um, let me get my wording right, sorry, it's getting late. I'd like to make, make a motion to amend as submitted, thank you.
Ms. Heck, do you want to second that?
Yeah, second, sorry. I thought she was saying something else, that's why I waited, sorry.
No worries.
Second.
Okay, so there's been a motion by Ms. Harkar, second by Ms. Heck to uh, amend Resolution ten, twenty twenty-five as submitted, is there any discussion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Heck?
Pardon?
For amending.
I was thinking something else, yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Resolution ten, twenty twenty-five has been amended as submitted.
Would like to move to adopt?
Second.
Uh, motion to adopt by Ms. Harkar, second by Ms. Heck. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a comment in pertaining to Resolution ten and eleven.
Excuse me, folks, could you please? Thank you.
Resolution ten and eleven, at committee meeting on eight twenty-five, that was wrong, four eight twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, uh, Mayor Vivins interfered with council's right to investigate these two resolutions by preventing the Chief of Police from attending the meeting at. by preventing the chief of police from attending the meeting at my request, claiming he had the right to do so as mayor according to the city charter. I disagreed and said I would check the charter. Not only does the, does council rules for twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five revised on nine three twenty twenty four, Article six A, page four, allows council to ask questions of elected officials. At appointed officials, the city charter, section twenty five G, general powers and duties of the mayor, the mayor stated that council needed his prior permission according to the charter to speak, to have somebody come in and, and speak. The council was denied the right to have answers from the chief of police. I would respectfully request that Councilor Harcar pull resolutions ten and eleven. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
How do I respond to that? Do I just respond to that or?
That's fine.
I will not be polling them.
That's fine. If there's no other discussion, Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Upstain.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Resolution ten twenty twenty five has been adopted. Resolution eleven twenty twenty five. A resolution, resolution proclaimed the city of Whitehall a safe haven for the LGBTQIA community and declaring an emergency.
Um, President Potter, I'd like to make a motion, um, uh, to amend as submitted.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Harcar, second by Ms. Heck to amend resolution eleven twenty twenty five as submitted. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Resolution eleven twenty twenty five has been amended as submitted.
Move to adopt?
Second.
There's a motion to adopt, uh, by Ms. Harcar, second by Ms. Heck. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Upstain.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Resolution eleven twenty twenty five has been adopted. Under first reading, we have quite a few items this evening, and we'll start with ordinance twenty seven twenty twenty five. Unappropriating nineteen thousand two hundred dollars from the fire department grant fund retention and mental health expense account, two twenty one zero 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 point fifty thousand.
Can we pause for a second?
Yeah, President Potter, can we wait one moment?
Yeah, well, we'll wait a few minutes for the room to clear. Well, introduce them about for me.
Okay, I just, I was, I want to make sure. She didn't say, I think that's why I paused.
Yeah, yeah, because, no, because it's like.
Yeah.
I usually say that, but we start off with the amended.
No, it's fine. I just, it's been a long.
No, no, you're not wrong. It's definitely been.
You don't, you don't have to leave.
It's only ten thirty.
But Jerry, they can.
They can.
Thank you, everyone.
Oh. Does he need to grab that?
He's looking for his mic pack.
Oh.
It's right there. Thank you, Brad.
He's on our side.
Yeah.
That was actually funny.
Okay, I think we can pick it back up. So, ordinance twenty seven twenty twenty five, unappropriating nineteen thousand two hundred dollars from the fire department grant fund retention and mental health expense account, two twenty one point zero 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 point fifty thousand.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty seven twenty twenty five and move for the suspension of all rules.
No. Oh, yes, suspension of all rules. Thank you. Now, now I've had a long evening. There's been a, uh, motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance twenty seven twenty twenty five and suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison for the adoption of ordinance twenty seven twenty twenty five. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty seven twenty twenty five has been adopted. Ordinance twenty eight twenty twenty five, unappropriating nine thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and fifty, fifty cents from fire department grant fund BWC safety intervention expense account, two twenty one point zero 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 point fifty thousand fifty.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty eight twenty twenty five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance twenty eight twenty twenty five and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty eight twenty twenty five has been adopted. Ordinance twenty nine twenty twenty five, unappropriating six thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars from the police department grant fund cadet internship program, expense account two twelve zero 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 point five hundred fifty.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty nine twenty twenty five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance twenty nine twenty twenty five and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty nine twenty twenty five has been adopted. Ordinance thirty twenty twenty five, unappropriating four thousand eighty-three dollars and fifty cents from the police department enchantment, and, yeah, enchantment grant, uh, yeah, enhancement grant fund expense account, two thirty point zero 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 point fifty thousand.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance thirty twenty twenty five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Uh, there's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance thirty twenty twenty five and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I like enchantment better.
I was turning, I was turning into a Disney movie. Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Uh, motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion on the? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty twenty twenty five has been adopted. Ordinance thirty one twenty twenty five, authorizing and approving a supplement appropriation in amount of thirteen thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents from unappropriate monies in the Wim Petty Fund, two seventy-nine, to the TIF fees expense account, two seventy-nine point zero 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 point fifty-nine thousand six hundred.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance thirty one twenty twenty five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith to introduce ordinance thirty one twenty twenty five and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Uh, motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty one twenty twenty five has been adopted. Ordinance thirty two twenty twenty five, appropriating four hundred seventy-nine thousand three hundred eight dollars and ninety-five cents from previously unappropriate monies in the police department grant fund, two twelve, to the one-time strategic community investment grant expense account, two twelve point zero 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 point five hundred twenty.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance thirty two twenty twenty five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. El, uh, Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance thirty two twenty twenty five and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Uh, motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty two twenty twenty five has been adopted. Ordinance thirty three twenty twenty five, approving and making a supplement appropriation in the amount of one million four hundred twenty-three thousand dollars from previously unappropriate monies in the police building renovation addition fund, three twenty-four, to the police building renovation addition expense fund account, three twenty-four point zero 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 point fifty thousand.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance thirty three twenty twenty five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance thirty three twenty twenty five and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty three twenty twenty five has been adopted. Our last piece of legislation this evening is resolution fourteen twenty twenty five, resolving to approve the then-announced certificates.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution fourteen twenty twenty five and move for the suspension of all rules.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Brown to introduce resolution fourteen twenty twenty five and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
I'll second.
Uh, motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Brown. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Resolution 14, 2025 has been adopted. This now brings us to our second poll public of the evening. Same rules apply, you may come forward, sign in, state your name, and you'll have three minutes, and you can only talk on a topic that you may not have already spoken to.
I saw that, Katie.
No, but listen, thank you all for your hard work and continuing to grow and move our city forward. That's it.
Can I, just really quick, I know, we know who you are.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Michael Spicer. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else? Okay, community day board. That's fine, all right, I'm gonna, no, okay.
I'll say stuff next week.
Okay. Now we come to poll council, and I would just like to make this request. Of course, you are free to do whatever you like, but I know sometimes we get deliverous with our words.
I hear you.
And so I would certainly appreciate a very abbreviated response, if any, from each and every one of you. But again, it's your purview to do as you wish, but I think that everyone else would certainly appreciate your abbreviation. So with that, Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you, Mr. President Potter, I'm gonna...
Thank you.
No, I just want to thank everybody who came tonight. Thank you to everybody who's watching online. I just want to say that ultimately, I appreciate the civic engagement that we've seen. Again, you know, it may not be perfect, it may not, you know, be as inclusive as we might want at this point, but my hope is that as we continue to face the challenges that we're gonna continue to face, that we do come together, that we do have these discussions, and disagree, and flesh out ideas, but ultimately that we're all on the same page, all on the same team, trying to do what's best for the community. I did just, sorry, I just wanted to thank the mayor and everyone else involved for the state of the city. I was able to attend, and, you know, I just really appreciate the forum that you... Number one, allowing the youth council to come up and to share their voices and their stories. Again, being able to get children and young people involved civically this early is, it's incredible, and it really is a step in the right direction for what we want to see for our future. So thank you all for all that. I would just hope that, well, just in general, to the Fairway project, I would just say that, as we've heard tonight, that this moved forward without an emergency. So just because I was for the passing of the legislation tonight does not mean that I don't want you to exercise your civic duty. So you all have the ability, if you wanted to, to create a referendum and do whatever it is that entails. But ultimately, again, we have to do what we think is best for the city. I have to vote my conscience and be able to sleep at night, so there's that. But ultimately, my hope is that next week, the crowd does not look like this. I hope that it's packed again, and that, you know, everybody's here and engaged, but, you know, we'll see what happens moving forward, so I'm, I'm, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, it is National Minority Health Month, so please, please, Minority Health Month, please get your strings and all of that, take care of yourself. Secondly, I want to thank the mayor for a very, very informative state of the city, that we had 16 employers there, people received jobs, that is a plus, and also the town hall setup. I thought that was unique, and I'd like to see more of that, so that was wonderful. Thank you, Mayor, for your thoughts and your feelings and the emotions behind the words that you spoke. And as I read the multiple emails regarding Fairway Cliffs, many people said representing the people. Is it really doing what some people want? Or are we doing what's invested towards the city? People are vested in what they want, overlooking the fact that there are other times, there are times what's needed is primary. Make a Wood is a primary example. Do we referendum every action the city contemplates as it relates to economic development because people say so? God forbid. It's unfortunate that we live in a society more focused on the me than the us. It's the togetherness, in my opinion. The city, and just for a correction, the city receives 7.0% property tax, the remainder goes to Whitehall Schools, and the other to the county. Also, to say that we sit here and and really don't pay attention to what the community says is wrongly stated, and I was not told as an applicant, who the applicant was, I was told who the applicant was, but not that he owned both parcels, both properties. It was in negotiations. The other part of our monies goes to Adam H., Children's Services, the city, Columbus State Board of General Fund, Franklin County BDD, Joint Vocation, schools, the libraries, the parks, the schools, the senior options, and the zoo. So the money that is received from property taxes goes and divvied out in all of those different areas. In my opinion, progress is the big picture. Some said justice for all, dignity and rights for all, but where are the rights when we are standing in the way of progress or somebody or developer wanting to develop? Love anyway, I wish that were true. When one is diminished, it hurts us all. Spoke of the transfer of wealth. We do that, I mean, the transfer of wealth is what you teach your kids, what you want to learn, or what you want to see move forward. As we grow, we not, I may not even be here after all this is over and done, but progress continues, change is different, or is difficult, and change in culture is the last thing to, the culture is the last thing to change. And I know that in Whitehall, there's a culture that is hard-pressed on changing, but progress is important. I thought what was said by Councilor Smith was well said regarding the ordinances, and for the numbers and the heartfelt thoughts that were conveyed. I want to thank everybody for coming. I want to thank everybody that hold public. I want to thank everybody that got up and spoke to the ordinances and bared their opinions, their hearts, and all those emotions. It didn't fall on deaf ears, but at the end of the day, we are charged to do what's in the best interest of the city, safety, and welfare first. That's what our oath of office says, okay?